Good morning. The meeting will come to order, please. It's a lot quieter here than it is in the school. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to 2020 Wellfleet Annual Town Meeting. Thank you for all for getting here quickly. And thank you for whoever you all prayed to that got us this beautiful day. This is going to be a very unique experience for all of us, so I'm going to ask your patients if there's any technical glitches as we go through the meeting that we have to resolve, but I'm really hoping that we don't have too many problems. We did ask people to try to reserve the seating under the tent for those who aren't comfortable sitting out in the sun. There are plenty of open seats. If you'd like to move up a little closer, you're more than welcome to. If you're happy sitting in the sun and enjoying this beautiful day, please, please continue to do so. But there are still some open seats, open seats under the tent if you'd like. I want to start by thanking and giving enormous amount of credit to all of the town staff who comprised our town meeting task force and who helped to make this meeting possible. Shout out to the DPW, the Fire Department, the Police Department, Town Administration, the Town Clerk, our Community Services Director, the Health Department, the Rec. Department, our Media Ops Director, and a particular special thanks go out to Courtney Butler, who really doing a lot of great good tasks. Thank you all. I've been asked to give you a couple of reminders. First and foremost is a reminder to fill out your census form if you haven't already. I suspect those of you who are civic-minded enough to come to town meeting have probably done your census forms, but if you know people are having or you might just, you know, ask your neighbors and friends if they've done that. Sadly, Barnstable County turns out to have had a relatively low response to the census rate, I mean, to the census questionnaires, and it's very important to the county in terms of federal and state dollars coming to us in the future. So if you haven't done it, or if you know people who haven't, please ask them and encourage them to do so. It's very easy. It takes maybe 10 minutes online. You can either do it by phone. The number is 844-330-2020, or on the web, it's www.my2020census.gov. That information is available on the homepage of the Wellfleet homepage website, and again, I encourage people to do that. I've also been asked to remind you about the Well Line, which is a phone and text support line serving Wellfleet. It's staffed by a volunteer group of medical and medical health professionals. The support that's offered by the Well Line includes a listening ear, peer support, and a weekly Zoom group with a health professional. Lots of people have been stressed in a variety of ways during this very difficult time in our country's history, so if you need that support, and if you know anybody who does, again, their phone number is 508-514-1633. Again, this information is also available on the town's homepage on the web. Just want to remind you, try to stay seated and not do a lot of moving around throughout the meeting. There are some trip hazards I want you to be aware of, lines for the speakers and the microphones, so just be aware of that. We do have some assistive hearing devices available, kind of on a first-come, first-served basis. I know Audio Associates, who's providing our sound system, has done a good job, but if you need a hearing assistive device, they're available. Please come back to the sound tent behind me here, and they can help you out with that. The Fire Department has also made water available if anybody needs it. There's white coolers by the table where you check in, and I think they've probably got some over by the EMS tent as well, so please avail yourself if you'd like that. And there is a recycling container for any recyclables as you leave by the home team dugout over there. At the beginning of every meeting, I like to recognize people who've worked for the town who have retired since our last meeting. First and foremost, Kathleen Bacon, who served on the Select Board, stepped down. Why don't we hold the applause until I've read all of these, if you don't mind, please? Dan Horton has retired, our Town Administrator. Pat Flanagan, Patrick Flanagan, retired from the DPW. Warren Silva, also from the DPW. And I'd like to make a special recognition of Mort Inger, who stepped down after 25 years on the Wellfleet Elementary School Committee. And some people tell me that he was better known for something like 22 years of serving as a busboy for the annual spaghetti dinner. So thank you to all of those who gave service to our town. I have a number of introductions to do as well. It's almost a year and a half since our last town meeting, so this list is a little longer than it might otherwise be. We have two new members of the Select Board, Michael DeVasto and Ryan Curly. I'd like to welcome our new Town Administrator, Maria Broadbent. We have Jennifer Conjel as our new Town Clerk. She was the interim Town Clerk at our last meeting. She's now been appointed our Town Clerk. Our Town Accountant, Jean Ferrari. Town Treasurer, Miriam Spencer. And the Town Collector, Karen Murphy. On the Fire Department, we have some promotions I'd like to recognize. Lieutenant Mary Lou Wood, Lieutenant Curtis Gillette, and new hires firefighter, paramedic Colleen Phelan, firefighter EMT Jeff Hall, and firefighter EMT Brian Mozelski. Also, some promotions in the Police Department. Michael Hurley, our new chief, was promoted to chief or assumed the role of chief after the retirement of Chief Fasette. Lieutenant Kevin LaRocco has been appointed, has been promoted to Second in Commandment Department. Geraldine Pence promoted to Sergeant, and new officers, Michael Allen and Officer Matthew McGee. And new hires at the DPW, Kyle Jackett, Justin Pachonas, and Don Bragton. Welcome to all of you. The last introduction for today, Mr. John Giorgio from the Firm of KP Law is here today with us as Town Council. Carolyn Murray, who is frequently with us representing Copeland and Page, had a conflict. There's another town that she represents that's also having their town meeting today. It's been our practice for the past number of years to recognize people who have worked for the town who have passed away since we last met, and again, since, this has been since the 2019 Annual Town Meeting. The list is a bit longer than it might otherwise be. I'd like to remember Richmond Bell, who served on the Wellfleet Fire Department. Bruce Drucker, served on the Zoning Board of Appeals. Irving Glon, who served with the DPW. Margot Cochruth, who served on the Cultural Council and the Human Rights Commission of Barnstable County. Charles Mulligan, who was a member of the Fire Department. Austin Pinkham, who worked for the DPW. Helen Purcell, who worked on the Historical Commission. Roger Putnam, who held almost every office that could be held in town. He was a member of the Select Board, the School Committee, the Barnstable County Assembly of Delicates, the Charter Review Committee, the Bylaw Review Committee, the Nauset Regional School Committee, the Open Space Committee, the Recreation Committee, the Wellfleet School Committee, and the Zoning Board of Appeals. Charles Reeves, who worked for the DPW. Barbara Souter, who was an elections worker. Catherine Stillman, who was a member of the Recycling Committee and the Library Building Committee, as well as a library trustee. Charles Valley, who was a member of both the Wellfleet Fire Department and the Wellfleet Police Department. Joe Wanko, who was a member of the Water Issues Advisory Committee and the Seppage Study Committee. And Peter Watts, who was a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals and the National Seashore Advisory Committee. I'd ask that we observe together a few moments of silence to remember these members of our community who served the town in a great variety of ways. And as we do that, I also ask that we remember those across the world who have lost their lives to the pandemic and who suffer the ongoing effects of poverty, inequality, and justice. And I also want us to think of all the essential workers who have continued to do their jobs during this time. The first responders, the medical personnel, the food service workers, the grocery clerks, truck drivers, millions of other people who make it possible to maintain a working society in the face of unprecedented challenges. If we could have a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. This time, I will formally call the meeting to order. We, our normal quorum is 6% of the number of registered voters, but due to the special legislation that was passed by the state, which the Board of Selectmen took advantage of, the quorum for this meeting was set at 100, and I've been informed by the registrars that we have in excess of 100. I think we actually have close to 200 people here today. It doesn't look at it as you look around the field, but thank you all for coming out on this beautiful day. I'd like to talk about how we're going to conduct this meeting because it's going to be a little different than has been our normal practice in the past. All of the main motions are going to be made by the Chair of the Select Board, Mr. Curly, I'm sorry, Mr. DeVasto. And we're doing this basically to move through the warrant perhaps a little more quickly and minimize the time. This does not reflect in any way the positions of various members of the Board of Selectmen. I just, I asked the Board if they could have one person make all the main motions, and I'll be with a few exceptions. And again, Ms. Reinhardt is going to second all the motions. Anyone who wishes to speak in debate, I would ask that you stand at your seats. We have a number of volunteer microphone wranglers who will bring a microphone to wherever it is that you're standing, and you can speak in debate from where you stand rather than having to have a lot of movement. The volunteer wranglers have come to us courtesy of the Rec. Department. These are all young folks who have worked for the Rec. Department during the summer, and I thank Rebecca, Becky Rosenberg for helping us out with this. Our volunteers are Tia, Maggie, Emma, Nicole, Harry, and Dylan. So they will bring a mic to you on a long boom. It doesn't have to be right up close to your mouth to use it. The microphones will be opened when you're going to speak, and they will sanitize the microphones between speakers. I would ask that you try to keep your mask on, rather, if possible. If we can't understand you, I'll let you know, and you can drop your mask. But if possible, I think we should be able to understand everyone as long as you, if you keep your mask on. And please, please don't touch the microphones if you can help it. If there are any presenters who would like to use the lectern, we do have a lectern here for, as a presenter's mic. I'd ask if you're planning to speak from that lectern to try to come up ahead of time before your article comes up. The other thing is, I normally try to call on people by name. I guarantee you, I'm not going to be able to tell who you are between the distance and the mask. So if, when you begin to speak, if you could please introduce yourself to me and to your fellow voters, I would appreciate that. I'm assuming that we're going to be able to complete our business at this session and get through all of the articles on the warrant. By way of encouraging you to be mindful of how long or how often you plan to speak, I will tell you that the automatic sprinkler system on the ball field comes on at 2:00 p.m. Just some notes on debate. The procedures are explained. That was a joke. The sprinklers are not coming on. At least, that's what I've been told by the DPW. The procedures for, town meeting procedures are all explained on page four of your warrant, and there are also explanations on page three of the terms relating to Proposition Two and a Half. There's also a fuller explanation of town meeting procedures on the moderator's page on the town website. I just wanted to make a quick note on the election that we had earlier this week. There have been a lot of questions as to why the election was scheduled before town meeting, which is not the way we normally do it. This was the result of a quirk in timing that was a result of state law, which requires that elections on contingent articles that come to an annual town meeting have to be voted on before September 15th. And because this meeting was now, today, with a rain date of tomorrow and Monday, if we needed it, and happily we didn't, the election had to be scheduled before the 15th. So the Town Clerk, in terms of trying to find a date to schedule that election, was restricted by state law. So that's why the election took place before town meeting. That's not normally our practice, but I thank those of you who did make the effort and get out to the polls. I think the turnout was somewhere in the close, it was 775, something like that. Yeah, that was a good turnout for that town election. Just a note on voter cards. When you checked in, you were given a brightly colored piece of paper, a little larger than our normal voter card. There are only numbers on the first 100, and that was so we would know when we hit the quorum, so don't be concerned if there's not a number on your card. And I think there may be some more than one colored paper. The colors don't mean anything. It's just something bright that I could see. When we, if we need to, the way we're going to take the votes is we're not going to try to do voice votes. It'd be too hard to judge what people are saying from a distance. Sound would just get lost here. And also, we want to minimize how much people are shouting or talking, so we minimize the number of aerosolized particles that we're putting in the air. So we will take all of our votes by holding up the voter card. When we do that, if everybody could look around, I think we can, we'll all be able to get a good sense of whether the motion has passed or not. If I can't tell by the show of voter cards, I'm going to have to take a count. We've already sworn in foretellers, and we'll count by sections as we normally do. And again, I will prompt you to hold up your voter cards. Again, if you're planning to speak in debate, please stand in position at your seat. I've asked a couple of the volunteers in the vests to serve as spotters so that I hopefully will not miss anybody who's standing who wishes to speak. If I miss you and they don't see you, just make enough noise or motion that I can catch you and let you have your chance to speak. In debate, you must speak to the motions that are on the floor. Your questions and comments are part of your role as voters in town meeting, but you cannot make personal remarks or accusations. You may not question the motives of another speaker. There will be no back-and-forth debate between speakers, between individuals. Any questions have to come through through me as the moderator. And if you are recognized for the purpose of answering a question, you're only recognized briefly to answer the question as quickly as possible. The person who is speaking does not give up the floor. The, so that you're asked to answer the question, but then yield the floor back to the person who asked the question. I'd remind you that our town meeting has a very strong tradition of respect. Speakers will be held strictly to those standards during the debate. Because this warrant is relatively long, and I don't want to keep people sitting out in the sun too long, I'm going to ask that we limit speakers to three minutes per person per occurrence. You're only allowed to speak twice to any question before us, and I will not recognize somebody for a second time unless everybody who spoke, who wants to speak, has had a chance to speak once. If you're the presenter of an article, the main, on a main motion or an amendment, get a little bit more time, but I'm asking everybody to try to keep it to under five minutes. And in the past, I've been relatively lenient with these timeframes. I'm going to do my best to be a little more strict about that today. So I'd ask you to think about what questions you want to ask and what points you want to make before I recognize you. Any amendments? I would ask that you please give them to me in writing. I've already been warned that there are a couple of people who want to make amendments, and I have the text. The reason for asking for them in writing, unless it's just a single word or something, is that the Town Clerk needs to make an accurate record of what the town meeting proceedings are. I need to be able to make sure that voters know clearly exactly what's being proposed. So I would ask that if you plan to make an amendment, that I have that in writing. Any exceptions would be at my discretion. Just a couple of other matters. If you could take your cell phones, please, and make sure they're on either airplane mode or vibrate. I would discourage you from texting during the meeting. I'd ask that you pay attention to the meeting. Again, just a reminder, if I don't call on you by name, please introduce yourself to your fellow voters and to me. If there's a medical emergency, please make enough noise to get my attention and to get the attention of the Fire Department personnel. We have a good number of members of the Fire Department. We have an EMS medical aid tent set up. If somebody is having any kind of a medical issue, I need to have that brought to my attention or to their attention. Do what you need to get my attention. It's not the time to be subtle. And on applause, I would ask that you not applaud, excuse me, applaud after individual speakers. I'd like to try to move the meeting along. You have your opportunity to express your feelings by voting, and after an article has passed, or if it's gone the way you think it should, I'd welcome applause at that point. But I'd ask that you not applaud after individual speakers. Just a couple of other things. I would ask that you try to remain seated for the duration of the meeting, and when we're finished with the meeting, I ask that not everybody get up and leave at once. I'm going to try to dismiss the meeting section by section so we don't crowd the exits so we're able to be good and maintain the social distancing that we've all worked so hard to accomplish. And I would ask that you not linger near the exits as we leave. And I would ask also that you, maybe if you can, if you're able, if you can take your chairs and just bring them, leave them by the dugout when we leave. Excuse me. I guess turning away from this head mic doesn't really work. This is the closest I'm ever going to get to be a rock star with a microphone on my head, I think. Just a couple of final notes. I always like to remind you that when you come to town meeting and participate as a voter, we all together constitute the legislative body of our two-part town government. The Board of Selectmen, Select Board being the executive branch, town meeting is the legislative branch. Each of us is a citizen legislature when we participate in town government. While we may be making history with this outdoor meeting in an unprecedented time, we are continuing our long and unbroken tradition of self-government. As we begin our town meeting, I'd like to offer this quote from the late civil rights leader John Lewis. "Democracy is not a state. It is an act, and each generation must do its part to build what we call the beloved community, a nation and world society at peace with itself." So I encourage you to engage in lively debate, to respect your fellow voters, and to be patient as we decide on each proposal before us. Annual Town Meeting Warrant, Sunday, I'm sorry, Saturday, September 12, 2020, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. To either of the constables in the town of Wellfleet and the county of Barnstable, greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of Wellfleet, qualified to vote in town affairs, to meet at the ball field across the street from the Wellfleet Elementary School, 100 Lawrence Road in Wellfleet, on the 12th day of September 2020 at 10:00 in the morning, then and there, to vote upon the following articles. And I will omit the reading of the articles. And you are hereby directed to serve these warrants, that these refers to both the warrant for the town election and for the town meeting, to serve these warrants by posting attested copies thereof, one in the post office in Wellfleet and one in the post office in South Wellfleet, 14 days at least before the date of said meetings. Hereof fail not and make due return of these warrants with your doings thereon to the Town Clerk at the time and place of said meetings, given under this hands the 28th day of July 2020. And it's signed by the five members of the Select Board, Michael DeVasto, Chair, Justina Carlson, Janet Reinhardt, Vice Chair, Helen Miranda Wilson, and Ryan Curly, the Clerk. And the Constable's return of service reads, "I have served the foregoing warrants by posting attested copies thereof in the post office in Wellfleet and the post office in South Wellfleet on the 13th of August 2020, which is at least seven days before the date of said meeting as within directed." And that's dated 8/13/2020, signed by the Constable Michael Parlante. The breeze is lovely, but it makes it a little hard to handle the papers. Article One, may I have a motion, please? Mr. DeVasto.
I move to accept and adopt Article One with the wording of the motion to be printed in the motion's booklet.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Article One be accepted and adopted with the wording of the motions to be as printed in the motion's booklet. Article One is our omnibus budget, and the way we handle our omnibus budget is, I will, this begins on page 32 in your warrant booklet. We will go through this section by section. If anyone has a question or a comment they would like to make, please stand, and I will recognize you. Once we get through, if there are any questions that need to be answered, any motions or amendments that need to be made, we will deal with those. Once we have done all of that, come back to the beginning, ask if there are any final comments, and then we will take one vote on the budget as a whole or as amended. First section is general government, begins line 114 at the top of page, I'm sorry, page 32, and runs, general government, I believe, runs through the page 34, line 196. Any questions on the general government portion of the budget, or any comments? The Select Board or the Town Administrator have anything they would like to say? Okay. Seeing none. The next portion of the budget begins on page 34, line 210, Department of Public Safety, the Police Department, the Communications Dispatchers and so forth, and completes at the bottom of page 34. Questions or comments on that portion of the budget? Seeing none. Next portion of the budget is the education budget. The elementary school, the Nauset Regional School District, and the Cape Cod Regional Technical High School District. Questions or comments? Mr. Dugan.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that line 301 of the Nauset Regional School District assessment be reduced by $1.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded that line 301, the Nauset Regional School District assessment be reduced by $1. Mr. Dugan, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm the author of the two-page, the first two pages in your information handout, and you can identify them. Those are two graphs at the bottom of the first page. That's what it looks like. And it's titled Budget Article One: Phase Out Taxpayer Subsidy for Regional School Choice Program. The inter-district school choice program has enormous financial impact and consequences for the taxpayers of Nauset. The choice program increases our operating budget, and it has already increased the estimate for the high school reconstruction by approximately $70 million, if you include principal and interest. The first graph, which is a pie graph, shows the composition of the student body at our high school. It shows that 616 of our students live in the Nauset district, and 219 come from outside of our district as part of this choice program. If we were at the state average in accepting choice students, we would not have 219 choice students at the high school. We would have 10. The second graph, which is a bar graph, shows the financial impact this has on us as taxpayers. The state requires sending districts to pay the receiving district, which is Nauset, $5,000 per student. The problem is our costs are more than $20,000 per student, $2,700 to be precise. And the difference, more than $15,000, is a subsidy that we have to pay annually to keep, to fund the choice program. This is a massive subsidy. It amounts to more than $4 million per year. And this is why most schools in Massachusetts do not accept any choice students. If we look just at the top 25 rated high schools in Massachusetts, you see a very interesting picture. What you see is that half of these higher-rated schools have an average size of less than 600 pupils. They're all less, all of this 13 schools are higher-rated than Nauset, and they're smaller than Nauset. And tellingly, they spend $2,000 less per pupil than Nauset spends. Bigger is not better. Bigger is just more expensive. And we can learn a lot from these other schools, and I hope we do. You and the Regional School Committee will be voting on both of these important financial issues over the next few months, both the choice program and the high school reconstruction. So please consider the recommendations that I've given you at the bottom of the second page. If these recommendations are adopted, we can save $25, $5 million a year over the next 25 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dugan. Further debate on Mr. Dugan's motion? Yes, Ms. Wilson? Yes, Ms. Wilson? Could you, wait till your mics turned on, please. Go ahead.
Hi, my question is, I'm unclear about the motion to reduce it by $1, is that what you said?
Yes.
What does that do? Thank you.
Mr. Dugan, if you'd briefly like to answer the question, please.
The moderator and I have had several discussions leading up to this, and in order to speak, in order to have three minutes to address the handout that I've given you, I had to make a change to the dollar amount. I don't want to make, our subsidy from Wellfleet is $590,000. I did not want to cut any money from this budget, even though we give a substantial subsidy every year, because the school committee has already voted to accept the choice students for our coming school year, which I believe starts Monday, and I believe they also signed all the contracts with the teachers for the coming school year. So it's not, I think, feasible to cut a portion of our subsidy, cut a portion of the school committee budget without creating a foolishly chaotic situation.
Thank you, Mr. Dugan. Does that answer your question, Ms. Wilson? Yes, thank you. Further debate on the motion? Yes, I'm sorry, yes, could you, one on the microphone, is that Mr. Easley? Yes, it is, Mr. Easley?
Can I come to the podium?
If you'd like to come to the podium, you may, yes. Yes, Mr. Easley.
Glorious day, so we're lucky at least in that part of it. I must confess to you, I'm the elected representative for Wellfleet on the Nauset Regional School Committee, and so I'm here to address this issue with you. I did not see this, did not have access to this until 20 minutes ago, so it's going to be a little incomplete, but I will address it as well as I possibly can. So if you go through it, there's a couple points here. First off, the dollar amounts are fictional, and sadly, it's true, in that, first off, we talk about the cost of more than $4 million annually. There's no way of really recognizing the cost, and the trouble is, is because when students choice into our school, they also have other needs and things that are required of them, and those costs that are generated, be it a special teacher, an ed assistant, or whatever, is added on. So it is very difficult to come up with the exact cost and expenses of what school choice students have or cost the district. So let's just start at the beginning. We go through the total 19 of the school choice students are, of our students are school choice, and that creates a $70 million excess in construction costs. There's a few assumptions there. One is, is that we could rebuild the school that Monomoy built seven years ago for the same price, and that's not accurate. In the fifth year of the construction, proposed construction process for the high school, and we have looked at all sorts of different potential schools to build, and the cheapest one, even for the 616, if we made the adjustment, would be only a savings of roughly $30 million, if that. And it wasn't designed because that wasn't what we were spec for. Let's see. There's an important point down here on three, the state is what requires and sets the dollar amount for school choice students. We don't have any control over that. The state has set the $5,000 per pupil, and for us, with the added expenses and so forth that we bill back to the towns that these students come from, the actual price we receive is more in the range of $5,800. Going on to the next page, we get into the ranking of Nauset High School, and somehow that bigger is not better. One of the issues here, you have to remember, is that we don't live in an urban area. We attract a broad range of students, and they have different needs and different interests. One of the things that school choice allows us to do is provide a diverse academic course load that kids can take. And what that does is that some kid may not be into math, some kid may not be into science, but they may be into guitar, or jewelry making, or whatever. And our school has proven its ability to provide course offerings that almost every student can get into. And the benefit to that is, is that it keeps a student interested in attending the school and coming. So they may not be great in math, but they love their guitar making, or jewelry working, or yoga class, or whatever. And that is really what education's about, is quality education and keeping the students involved and actively participating. The record of Nauset school is exceptional in that point. In turn, comparing us to these other schools in the 26, we're ranked 26, most of those other schools are urban schools, and in turn, they have other facilities around them, options and choices that the school can take advantage of that we don't have here. So it isn't really a fair comparison necessarily, that we have some things we have to work with differently. And in turn, our transportation is also one of those costs that figure into there.
Mr. Easley, you're beginning to approach the limits of your time.
All right, I will sign up. First off, there are no new model schools available. That program has been suspended or stopped by the state, they don't do it any longer. One of the key points is the gentleman who has presented this to you all, I worked with for seven years, or five of my seven years on the Regional School Committee, I've been in numerous meetings with him on budget and finance issues, and at no point in time over that period was this brought up. This really has only been brought up once, and now. You can make changes to the school system, but it doesn't happen quickly, and we could do that. I think that the taxpayers should continue to support excellence in education. We have a 1A school in the high school, it is one of the only ones on the Cape. Every school on the Cape is a school choice school.
Mr. Easley, if you could wrap up, please.
One other point is, I mean, school choice has provided over its timeframe $21 million savings to the taxpayers of the member towns of the area. So there'll be a larger discussion on this when it comes before the voters, as far as rebuilding process and the proposal for the high school, and we can address some of the issues more thoroughly at that point in time. But school choice is a dynamic aspect that has provided and assisted in quality education at the Nauset High School, and I think we're proud, and it's an attraction of keeping people in our area. It's an important point of the quality of life where we live.
Thank you, Mr. Easley. Further debate on the motion? Yes, sir. Somebody's coming to you with a mic, is that Mr. Turkanian? Okay, Mr. Turkanian.
Yes, good morning, I'm Harry Turkanian. I am a member of the Nauset Region District School Building Committee, and I want to speak to just a couple of factual statements that are in this handout that I don't think accurately reflect the status of the building project. It is important to note that, actually, this is my third Mass School Building Authority-supported building project, and each building project comes with what's called a project funding agreement, in which the MSBA agrees to provide financial support if you build the school they invited you to build. So they have invited us to build a school to house 906 students, for which they are willing to provide approximately $36 million in reimbursement, or about a quarter of the cost. If you reduce the size of the school to 600 or 700 students, you will build it without MSBA support, which means the entire cost of that project will be on the taxpayers of the district. And if you do the arithmetic, the cost of building a school for 600 or 700 students without reimbursement will exceed the cost of the currently proposed building project net of reimbursement. So there is no saving in construction costs, so please bear that in mind when you consider this. The second thing is, I wonder if, I noticed that this amendment will fund the region assessment at a lower amount than was certified by the region, only by a dollar, but I think it has a pernicious effect. And I would ask that if Attorney Giorgio could be recognized to speak to what the effect of reducing the appropriation to meet the district's assessment by even a dollar will have on the budget process within the region.
Thank you, Mr. Turkanian, Mr. Giorgio, if you could address that question, please.
Mr. Moderator, through you to the previous speaker. If the town does not appropriate the full amount of the certified, amount certified by the district, even by $1, that is the legal equivalent of disapproving the budget. Nauset is a four-town district, and if two-thirds of those four towns, meaning the other three, approve the budget as certified, then the budget is in place, notwithstanding the fact that Wellfleet appropriated $1 less. If any of the other three towns disapprove or vote a lower amount, then the Nauset will not have an operating budget, they will have to proceed on a 1/12 budget as they're currently doing, and the school district would have to recertify a new amount, and it would have, well, any town that did not approve the original amount would have to hold a special town meeting to consider the recertified budget.
Thank you, Mr. Giorgio. Mr. Turkanian still on the floor, if you'd like.
So in effect, this is a pernicious amendment. Even reducing it by $1 will form a chaos in the budgetary process of the Nauset region. And I don't know about you folks, but I don't want to come back to this field in December for a special town meeting to fix a $1 anomalous action. So I would urge defeat of this amendment solely for that reason. Thank you.
Okay, yes, thank you, Mr. Turkanian. Somebody over here wish to speak? Yes. I'm sorry, I can't tell who you are from this distance, if you could identify yourself, please.
Hi, I'm Betsy Pontius, and I'm the Chair of the Wellfleet School Committee. I just wanted to add on just a little bit to what Chris Easley had stated. I think our work here is with the state funding policy and not with our actual budget. So if we do want to think about school choice and the amount we receive, I think we need to work with the state on that. And then the other thing is just addressing the idea of having a diverse program for our students. Yes, that means money, but it also means student bodies. And so by increasing the number of students that come to Nauset, we increase the number of students in each class. So if you like guitar making, you can't run it with just one student. So when we're talking about our diverse program of study, we want to make sure that we do, by offering student choice, we do increase and keep that going.
Thank you, Ms. Pontius. Further debate on the motion? Yes, Mr. DeVasto, I'm sorry, my apologies.
That's all right.
Takes a while.
I just want to point out also that this graph that states the cost per student at $20,700 Nauset's cost and $5,000 per choice pupil, the reducing choice students will only have the effect of increasing the cost of per pupil, as you still have to pay for all the facilities that are there, all the utilities, everything that goes into running the school without that $5,000. So we still have the building, we still have the teachers, so a class size reduction of however many doesn't correlate directly to a $20,700 cost. So what I'm saying is, reducing those number of choice students will increase the cost per pupil of non-choice students.
Thank you, Mr. DeVasto. Are you ready for the question? Yes. Mr. Dugan, for the second time, very briefly, please.
I'll try and be as brief as I can, but there are a number of errors, erroneous things stated by Mr. Easley, and I'd like to correct them one at a time. The first is that he said that we have to build this new proposed school at the same price that Monomoy did. That's not the case. We've allowed $9 million for inflationary costs, over above the $60 million that Monomoy spent to build their model school. Secondly, he said that we received in the past year $5,800, and that is true. The additional $800, however, is for special needs students, and special needs students cost a lot more than $20,700 a year, they average around $29,000. So the additional $800 doesn't cover the cost of special needs for the choice students. He also stated that most of the schools in the survey that were done of the higher-rated schools are urban schools, that's not the case, most of them are suburban, just as we are. The last thing that he said that was incorrect was that the model school program has been terminated, has been ended. That's not true. What was ended was simply a bonus in state aid that was given an additional, I think, 2% or 3% that Monomoy did receive, that is no longer in effect, but the program, the model school program is still in effect. One of the things that Harry had to say, I would have to take disagreement with, he said that we would not receive state aid if we went with a smaller school. The Massachusetts School Building Authority, we went to them on this, they said that's not true, they do not penalize town meetings, they said they're not in the business of penalizing town meetings, they come up with less expensive ways to build their schools and meet their school needs. So we would be eligible for state aid, just as Monomoy was when they built their school. The last speaker mentioned variable costs, and that's true. Some of our costs are fixed costs, so we don't save all of the difference. The subsidy is $15,000 per student, but we don't save all of that. Our variable costs, however, are 65% of the school budget. So we save 65% of that, or about $2.3 million if we didn't have the choice program.
Okay, Mr. Dugan, thank you. I believe Ms. Carlson would like to speak. Just want to remind voters that the motion before you is to reduce the budget by $1. Mr. Dugan asked for the opportunity to speak to the town meeting. He wanted to use this motion as a platform to talk about the school choice program, but I remind you that we're getting a little off-topic here. The motion is whether or not to reduce the budget by $1. So if we could begin to wrap up the discussion on that and move on, I would appreciate it. Ms. Carlson?
Yes, first of all, for the very serious budgetary reasons cited by Harry, KP Law, and Mr. Easley, I would urge the voter not to mess with the budget at this late date. The place for that kind of advocacy might be in the committee, who's just seen the materials for the first time. Secondly, as the proud stepmother of a recent graduate of Nauset Regional High School, who's now at UMass Amherst, who wasn't a natural student, who took advantage of guitar building, who took advantage of culinary, who had friends of out-of-district students in Monomoy and so forth, who flourished. I thought Nauset was like a private school. Our schools are our jewels, and our youth are our future. And it's always hard to pay for it, but what kind of community do we want to have? And I think that we give our youth excellent schools is something we should all vote for, and not sharpen our pencils and look for savings at the last minute.
Thank you, Ms. Carlson. Are you ready for the question?
Question.
All right, all those in favor of the motion made by Mr. Dugan, the motion was that line 301 of Nauset Regional School District assessment be reduced by $1. All those in favor of that amendment, please signify by holding up your voter cards. Okay, all those opposed? Okay, the motion clearly fails on a show of cards. Moving along with the remainder of the budget, the rest of page 35 covers the Department of Public Works. Any questions or comments on that portion of the budget? Page 36, Human Services, Culture and Recreation, questions or comments on that portion of the budget? Finally, page 37. Finally, page 37, unclassified accounts, our interest accounts, unclassified accounts, includes town's insurance costs and things like that. Questions or comments on that portion of the budget? Or if not, this is our last opportunity. If anybody would like to make a question or comment on the budget as a whole, if not, I call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion made, the motion being to move and accept Article 1 with the wording of the motion to be as printed in the motions booklet. All those in favor, please signify by holding up your cards.
[inaudible]
Thank you. Okay. Those opposed? Article, motion under Article 1 carries. Article 2, may I have a motion, please? Mr. Dvastow.
Okay.
This would be Article 2A.
Article 2A. I move to accept and adopt Article 2A with the wording of the motion to be printed, to be as printed in the motions booklet.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept and adopt Article 2A with the wording of the motion to be as printed in the motions booklet. Article 2A is the town's debt service, and the capital budget begins on pages 38 and 39. 39 outlines the detail of the debt service, if you'd like to make reference to that. Any questions or comments on the debt service portion of the capital budget? Seeing none? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying, I'm sorry, by holding up your cards. Old habits are hard to break. Any opposed? The Article 2A motion carries.
B.
Let me just, I'm sorry, I meant to, no, we did talk about why the, why the election would happen first, right. I'm getting old, I guess. Article 2B, may I have a motion, please?
I move that Article 2B be indefinitely postponed.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Article 2B be indefinitely postponed. Any questions or comments on this? Do you want to give a brief explanation, Mr. Dvastow?
Yeah, I believe that this was actually placed in the warrant accidentally. We had voted not to insert this as a select board, and so this is something that, working with the department head, we had agreed to bring to the next town meeting in a measure to try and reduce our budget for this fiscal year due to the constraints of COVID-19. So...
Thank you, Mr. Dvastow. Further comment or questions? If not, the motion before you is the motion for indefinite postponement of Article 2B. All those in favor of indefinite postponement, please hold up your cards. Those opposed? Appears to be unanimous. Article 2C, may I have a motion, please? Mr. Dvastow.
I move that Article 2C be indefinitely postponed.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Article 2C be indefinitely postponed. Questions or comments?
I'll just say that 2C, 2D, 2H, and 2J were all articles that did not pass on the town election, and the department heads had agreed that it would be better to indefinitely postpone them and bring them up into the next town meeting. Part of this may have been a result of the fact that we had town meeting after our election. So that's why those four are up there, and that's all I've got to say.
Okay. Questions or comments on the motion made under Article 2C? If not, all those in favor of indefinite postponement of Article 2C, please hold up your cards. Any opposed? Motion carries on a unanimous vote.
I move that, should I move yet?
You got to wait for me.
I got to wait for you.
I got to take notes.
Yeah, okay.
Article 2D, Mr. Dvastow.
Okay, I move that Article 2D be indefinitely postponed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Article 2D be indefinitely postponed, by the same logic, I presume. All those in favor of indefinite postponement for Article 2D? Any opposed? Motion carries on a unanimous vote. Article 2E, may I have a motion, please?
I move to accept and adopt Article 2E with the wording of the motion to be as printed in the motions booklet.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Article 2E be accepted and adopted with the wording of the motion to be as printed in the motions booklet. Discussion on the motion? Chief Pauli.
Good morning, everyone. It's great to see all of you here. And I just want to give a quick shout-out to the moderator for pulling this off, because he did all the work, basically, of getting us together. So this, this question is basically pretty simple. We wanted to replace the pump, the tank, on the current forestry truck, which is a 2007 unit. The truck's in good shape, but the pump and tank have been problematic since day one. We wanted to do this last year, but I pulled it from the warrant to try to limp out another year, but it's time. The current unit basically was made from scratch to save money. It has failed multiple times. It no longer is reliable, and we want to replace, again, just the pump in the foam system in the tank with a new recognized NFPA, National Fire Protection Association, rig. And I would appreciate your support.
Thank you, Chief Pauli. Further debate? Seeing none? The motion that's proposed, proposes to borrow the money for this. The borrowing was already approved by a majority vote at the ballot on Tuesday, but it needs a 2/3 vote here, because it is proposing borrowing. All those in favor of the motion made under Article 2E, the motion to accept and adopt 2E with the wording of the motion to be as printed in the motions booklet, all those in favor, please hold up your voter card. And all those opposed? Appears to me clearly that the motion has carried by a 2/3 vote. Article 2F, may I have a motion, please? Mr. Dvastow.
I move to accept and adopt Article 2F with the wording of the motion to be as printed in the motions booklet.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved to accept and, moved and seconded to accept and adopt Article 2F with the wording of the motion to be as printed in the motions booklet. Debate on the motion? Chief Pauli again.
Thank you again, Mr. Moderator. About every five years, we come in front of you to replace or supplement emergency medical service and rescue equipment, and this happens to be the year. What we're looking to do, what we really need to do, is a couple of new initiatives. One is that I never thought I'd be coming in front of the townspeople and asking for tactical gear, bulletproof vests, and helmets for fire rescue personnel. But all the fire departments have joined together to put together a regional task force. If we have such an unfortunate event where we have to mobilize into a large event that at least six fire rescue people are protected to affect triage treatment, and that's, it's very disheartening, but that's what we need to do. That's included in this article. We also have to purchase new intravenous pumps for the paramedics by state standards and replace our automated external defibrillators, because quite frankly, they're old and they're no longer supported. And then the last issue, or the last request that is included in this article, is for a utility train vehicle for, to back up the beach department, both for beach rescues and off-road and wood rescues. So that's essentially what this covers. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Pauli. Further questions or debate? Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, could you either come to a mic? We'll have a microphone brought to you. If you could stand, please. Somebody is coming to you with a mic. Is that Mr. Wolf? Yes. Not doing too bad.
Yeah, first of all, I'd like to hear from Chief Pauli as to what proportion of this article would be spent on tactical gear. I understand the rest of it. It makes perfect sense, but tactical gear for fire and EMS on Cape Cod, on the outer Cape, I find that shocking, to say the least, that we would need such equipment out here.
Good morning, Mr. Wolf.
Chief Pauli.
I agree with you through the moderator. But, you know, I think in this world that we're living in, which is totally upside-down in 2020, and if you see and are familiar with what's going around, going on around the country, all we're trying to do is be prepared to protect our folks if we have to be mobilized to that type of incident. Every other Cape Cod fire department has done so, or in the process of doing so. So basically, we're looking for six sets of this gear, which we hope we never have to use, but the, they're about $2,500 apiece between the vests and the helmets and some of the other things. And again, it's just if we have to provide a regional response, that's, we need to be prepared. Thank you.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Wolf? Thank you. Thank you, Chief Pauli. Further debate or questions?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Hurley.
Is this on? Hello?
Yes, it is.
So just so that the community knows, can Chief Pauli or Chief Hurley tell the town meeting the approximate lifespan of this equipment and when it may need to be replaced in the future?
Chief Pauli?
Basically, this equipment has a warranty for approximately, oh, for five years. And then, it's not to say that it would not still be usable after five years, but that is about as long as any of the may have access will warranty it.
Thank you, Chief Pauli. Further questions? All right, if not, the motion before you is the motion made under Article 2F to move and, accept and adopt Article 2F with the wording of the motion to be as printed in the booklet. Once again, this is an article that proposes to borrow the funds for this, so it requires a 2/3 vote. Those in favor of the motion, please hold up your voter cards. All right, any opposed? The motion clearly carries by a 2/3 vote. Article 2H, may I have a motion, please? Mr. Dvastow.
I move that Article 2H be indefinitely postponed.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Article 2H be indefinitely postponed. Questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion to indefinitely postpone Article 2H, please signify, hold up your cards. Those opposed? The motion for indefinite postponement carries.
I move that Article 2J be indefinitely postponed.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Article 2J be indefinitely postponed. Questions or comments? All those in favor of indefinite postponement of Article 2J, please hold up your cards. Any opposed? The motion for indefinite postponement carries. Article 2L, may I have a motion, please?
Yeah, I move to...
Mr. Dvastow.
I move to accept and adopt Article 2L with the wording of the motion to be as printed in the motions booklet.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Article 2L be accepted and adopted with the wording of the motion be, to be as printed in the warrant booklet. Debate on the motion? Mr. Dvastow.
This is basically to repair and improve the beach bathrooms. This motion is, this, these repairs are necessary. They're not necessarily, this was proposed before COVID-19 was an issue, but I believe that it will still help with sanitary, being able to sanitize the existing restroom facilities in the future. They're badly in need of repair.
Further debate?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, I hear a voice. Mr. McGee?
Yeah, I just wanted to explain, if I could, the finance committee's 8 to nothing vote to not recommend. We took our vote after COVID emerged, and as with some other articles that have been withdrawn, we had a general concern about the impact of COVID on things like going to the beach, going to the beach bathrooms, and so on. And so we thought the prudent thing to do was to not recommend this at that time.
Thank you, Mr. McGee. Further debate?
Danny?
Ms. Carlson?
Helen.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Wilson?
Yes. When we were discussing this at a select board meeting, and the DPW director was asked, what exactly would these repairs and improvements consist of, he, he said first and foremost, replacing the sinks, which are in use now. In other words, if it was something that made the bathrooms way more cleanable, it would make sense because of COVID. But it wasn't, it didn't, what was intended to, what was intended was not something that, as far as I could make out, would help with that. So I think I was the one who didn't vote to recommend it on the select board. Thank you.
Further debate, Ms. Carlson?
Yeah, we own a number of bathrooms, and 30K won't go far. There's things like crumbling floors, broken windows, basic repairs that any homeowner would recognize are tedious but need to be done. So I think that we shouldn't overcomplicate things and give the DPW the funds they need to do their necessary work.
Further debate? Yes, Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just wanted to mention a few things regarding this project. As the moderator mentioned, this, this has been hanging out there for a couple of years, but obviously due to COVID-19, some of those needed repairs are also going to include modernizing and upgrading fixtures, which include touchless controls for sinks and stalls, and improved ventilation with new commercial exhaust fans, and also plumbing and electrical panel upgrades. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vincent. Further debate?
Mr. Moderator?
Ms. Wilson, for the second time.
Ah, thank you. If I'd heard any of that, I would have voted to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Further debate? Any other questions or comments? Somebody, I'm not, one of my spotters is pointing to someone. I'm sorry, I can't see who it is. Is there someone else who wishes to speak?
No.
Well, yeah, I'm sorry, way back, back near the fence. I should have brought my binoculars. Somebody's coming to you now. Thank you.
It's Shelley Thomas, and I was just curious, does this mean that the porta-potties are removed from the, from the town beaches, or the restrooms are going to be available to use?
Yes.
Touchless?
I don't know.
Mr. Moderator?
Is there someone who can answer that question? Yeah, Mr. Dvastow.
We haven't determined that, but during this time period, when the state released its first initial guidelines, we, we couldn't meet them with our public restroom facilities. They have since dropped those guidelines and allowed public restroom facilities, kind of in the middle of authorizing and procuring the porta-potties. So one would expect that we will be opening those restrooms next year, but that decision hasn't been made. But we can assume that with the state's guidelines that, that we will meet those, because they're not requiring portable restrooms anymore.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dvastow. Another Ms. Thomas.
So did I?
Oh, I'm sorry. Was Ms. Thomas, did you, was that, did that answer your question?
Kind.
Kind of, but I just was kind of curious about the necessity to go right in and do those rooms with an extra cost if we're still paying for porta potties, that those restrooms are not going to be used, and you seem to not know yet.
Perhaps Ms. Thomas, Suzanne Thomas, can cast some light on that. Ms. Thomas?
In the spring, while the portable toilets were being mandated by the state, the town went forward and put it up to bid, and about a week after they were out there, the state reversed their decision and said we, public toilets were, would be accessible. The town was under contract until September 7th, and on September 8th, the portable toilets at all beaches that have a freestanding, what we refer to as a comfort station, have been reopened to the public. The DPW had the water tested and certified in July, and they were ready to open, and the DPW has stepped up and agreed to clean them for the balance of the beach season through September 27th.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Further debate? Yes, Mr. Wolf. Somebody bring a microphone to Mr. Wolf here. This is why we had young people serve as microphone wranglers.
Yeah, in view of what Mr. Vincent had to say, and I have to admit, I have not used the beach restrooms in quite a long time, but if they are anything like what I see at the marina, this is what our visitors see when they come to the beaches, when they come to the marina, and so, so forth. And in view of the fact that we're going to hopefully bring them into compliance with the new protocols due to COVID-19, I don't think $30,000 is too much to ask.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Are you ready for the question?
Yes.
Okay, the motion before you is the motion to move, to accept and adopt Article 2L with the wording of the motion to be as printed in the motion's booklet. This requires a majority vote. Those in favor of the motion, please hold up your voter cards. Okay, those opposed? It is a vote, a unanimous vote, no, I'm sorry, not unanimous, a majority vote. Article 2O, may I have a motion, please?
I move to accept and adopt Article 2O with the wording of the motion as to be as printed in the motion's booklet.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept and adopt Article 2O with the wording of the motion to be as printed in the motion's booklet. And just a point for those of you who may be sharp-eyed, you'll see that under the summary of capital projects in the rear of the warrant appendix, I think it was appendix B, this figure was listed as 71,000. That was incorrect. I think that was a rounding, rounded figure. The correct figure is the one that's in the motion of $70,996. Questions and comments on Article 2O? Seeing none. The motion before you is that we accept and adopt Article 2O with the wording of the motion to be as printed in the motion's booklet. Motion requires a majority vote. Those in favor, please hold up your voter cards. Any opposed? The motion carries on a majority vote. Article 2Q, may I have a motion, please?
I move to accept and-
DeVasto.
I move to accept and adopt Article 2Q with the wording of the motion as to be as printed in the motion's booklet. Accept that in the first sentence, after the word "purpose," delete the letter "O" and add the words "of funding the," period.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept and adopt Article 2Q as printed, or the wording of the motion to be as printed in the motion's booklet, and with the exception that after the letter "O" in the first sentence, the words "of funding the," so that that first sentence reads, "I move that the sum of $110,000 is appropriated for the purpose of funding the engineering of a potential fire suppression system at the Wellfleet Elementary School." Correcting a typo when the motion booklet was printed. Is there, we have a second, is, debate on the motion?
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. McGee.
Just a quick comment. It says the Finance Committee reserves recommendation. In the original wording of the article, it stipulated that it was a study, did not mention engineering, so we had a question about that. At our last meeting on Thursday, we voted seven to one to recommend.
Thank you, Mr. McGee. I had that information, and I neglected to televote her, so my apologies on that. Other questions or comments on this?
Just a question. Could we have some clarification as to exactly what is meant by fire suppression system? Being a school building, I would assume it has some kind of fire suppression system already.
Mr. Pauling, Chief Pauling, excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The history is not clear on this. When the addition was built to the elementary school back in the 90s, the building code at the time, and still does, required the building to have a sprinkler system. And the sprinkler system was part of the approval process and in the plans. At some point, someone, and I don't know who that someone is, waived that sprinkler system requirement. And to that person, that should not have been done. The building is required to be fully sprinkled, so at this point now, we have to retrofit the sprinkler system into the elementary school to make it code compliant.
Thank you, Chief Pauling. Further debate? Seeing none. The motion before you is to move, motion to accept and adopt Article 2Q with the wording of the motion to be as printed in the motion's booklet, and with adding the words "of funding the" after the letter "O" in the first sentence. The motion requires, I'm sorry, the motion authorizes borrowing, so that it requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the motion, please hold up your voter cards. All those opposed to the motion? The motion carries on a two-thirds vote, and it looks unanimous. Motion carries on a unanimous vote. Article 2T, may I have a motion, please? Mr. DeVasto.
Yeah, I move to accept and adopt Article 2T with the wording of the motion to be as printed in the motion's booklet.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved to accept and adopt Article 2T with the wording of the motion to be as printed in the motion's booklet. Debate on the motion? Questions? Questions or comments? I'm sorry. Yes, can't see who that is. Okay, Ms. Shepherd, somebody's bringing you a mic.
I just want to ask, are there any residents living full-time on Lieutenant Island during the winter months? Because some of the rationale for this had to do with difficulties of access during the winter.
Mr. Vincent?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. For purpose of description of this project, this project, the scope of this project includes the area from Route 6 to Capo Road. It does not include the section of road that's subject to tidal flow. Within that range, it'll include 14 stormwater facility improvements to upgrade current, upgrade the drainage to current mass stormwater standards, roadway upgrades and paving from Route 6 to Capo Road, and as I, as I mentioned, does not include the low-lying portions of the road. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shepherd. Does that answer your question? Thank you. Further debate on the motion? I see somebody's voter card blowing away there. Seeing none. The motion before you is to accept and adopt Article 2T with the wording of the motion to be as printed in the motion's booklet. Once again, this authorizes borrowing, requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the motion, please hold up your voter card. Although, any opposed to the motion? The motion carries on a unanimous vote. Article 2V, may I have a motion, please? Mr. DeVasto.
I move to accept and adopt Article 2V with the wording of the motion to be as printed in the motion's booklet.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept and adopt Article 2V with the wording of the motion to be as printed in the motion's booklet. Any debate on the motion? Give me a moment here while I find my place in the motion's booklet. Questions or comments? Seeing none. The motion before you is to accept and adopt Article 2V with the wording of the motion to be as printed in the motion's booklet. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor of the motion, please hold up your voter cards. Any opposed? Motion carries on a unanimous vote. Article 3, may I have a motion, please? Mr. DeVasto.
I move to accept and adopt Article 3 with the wording of the motion to be as printed in the motion's booklet.
Is there a second?
Second.
Article, the motion is to accept and adopt Article 3 with the wording of the motions to be as printed in the motion's booklet. This is the Marina Enterprise budget, which is found on page 40, Appendix C, in your motion's booklet. Questions or comments on the Marina Enterprise budget? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by holding up your voter card. All those opposed? Motion carries on a unanimous vote. Article 4, may I have a motion, please? Mr. DeVasto.
I move to accept and adopt Article 4 with the wording of the motion to be as printed in the motion's booklet.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Article, accept and adopt Article 4 with the wording of the motion to be as printed in the motion's booklet. Debate on the motion? The motion is for the Water Enterprise budget. This is Appendix D, which can be found on page 42 of your motions, of the, I'm sorry, of your warrant, warrant booklet. Questions or comments on the Water Enterprise budget? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. I'm sorry, by holding up your voter card. Old habits are hard to break.
Aye.
All those, any opposed to the motion? Motion carries on a unanimous vote. Article 5 was postponed to the Springtown meeting. Just by, by a way of information, the reason that you're seeing some of these, either having been withdrawn or postponed, Mr. Horton, when he put together the warrant before he left, thought it would be, given that the Select Board and the FINCOM had already voted on a lot of these, it was easier to, to leave the number in intact rather than try to renumber, renumber all of the warrants. So that's why we have, we have the number in the way it is. So Article 6, may I have a motion, please? Mr. DeVasto.
I move to accept and adopt Article 6 with the wording of the motion to be as printed in the motion's booklet.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept and adopt Article 6 with the wording of the motion to be as printed in the motion's booklet. Debate on the motion? Any questions? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please hold up your voter cards. All those opposed? Motion carries on a unanimous vote. Article 7, may I have a motion, please? Mr. DeVasto.
Yeah, one second, I lost my page here. I move to accept and adopt Article 7 with the wording of the motion to be as printed in the motion's booklet.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept and adopt Article 7 with the wording of the motion to be as printed in the motion's booklet. Questions or comments? Any debate? Not, all those in favor of the motion made under Article 7, please hold up your voter All those opposed? Motion carries on a unanimous vote. Article 8, may I have a motion, please? Mr. DeVasto.
I move to accept and adopt Article 8 with the wording of the motion to be as printed in the motion's booklet.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept and adopt Article 8 with the wording of the motion to be as printed in the motion's booklet. Debate on the motion? Chief Pauling?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. For those of you that are regular attendees at town meeting, you've seen this pitch before, and I'm back in front of you again, hopefully for not too many more times. Just as a little reminder, we run a four-group system. We have four groups that work 24-hour shifts. That requires a 42-hour work week. We need a minimum of four personnel per group, and that would be to staff two ambulances when we have back-to-back ambulance calls, or to fully staff an engine company that should have four people on it. Again, we continue to have declining on-call personnel in terms of numbers. When I got here in 2013, we had 16 on-call members. Now we're down to five, and I anticipate retirements of at least three in the next two years, more than likely. Nation and Cape-like demographics show a 20% decline in on-call firefighters in the last two years, and we don't have a lot of ability to call back people that are off-duty because many of them have, live out of town due to the cost of housing here in Wellfleet. So I'm requesting two more full-time positions. That will give us three people total on each group around the clock, and I would appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Pauling. Further debate on the motion? Seeing none. This motion calls for a, it's contingent, was contingent on a passage of an override vote, which was, did pass at the ballot on Tuesday. It also needs to be voted on here by a majority vote. Those in favor of the motion, please hold up your voter card. Those opposed? Motion carries on a majority vote. Article 9, may I have a motion, please?
I move to-
Mr. DeVasto. Yes.
I move to accept and adopt Article 9 with the wording of the motion to be as printed in the motion's booklet.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and accept, it's been moved to accept and adopt Article 9 with the wording of the motion to be as printed in the motion's booklet. Debate on the motion? Chief Pauling?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and I would like to thank the townspeople again for your overwhelming support of your fire department. Last year, we attempted to put together some incentive for our call people or full-time people to move from EMT level to paramedic certification, which is a two-year process and costs about $10,000 just for the course alone. We've had one person take advantage of that this past year, and I'm happy to say that she will be a paramedic within the next year. And so what we're trying to do is provide incentive to fund paramedic training because there is an acute shortage of paramedics on Cape Cod. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Pauling. Further debate on the motion? Seeing none. The motion before you is the motion made by Mr. DeVasto to accept and adopt Article 9 with the wording of the- adopt Article 9 with the wording of the motion to be as printed in the motions booklet. Motion requires a majority vote. Those in favor, please hold up your voter card. Any opposed? Motion carries on a unanimous vote. Article 10, may I have a motion, please? Mr. DeVasto.
I move to accept and, I move to accept and adopt Article 10 with the wording of the motion to be as printed in the motion booklet.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept and adopt Article 10 with the wording of the motion to be as printed in the motions booklet. Debate on the motion?
Good morning, my name is Jim Hood. I am the Chair of Wellfleet's Board of Water Commissioners. Article 10 requests that the town authorize borrowing of up to $3.843 million to finance installation of a water main to replace an undersized 4-inch water main from the town's secondary water source, the Coles Neck Well Field on Grissmill Way on the north side of town. The existing main was installed in 1989 when the original water system was built to service the area near the transfer station. While the three wells at that site are approved to pump up to 100,000 gallons daily, the undersized water main restricts the flow to the point that it can only provide up to 40,000 gallons of water for the hydraulic flow. The new water main will originate at the existing Grissmill Way Well Field and follow the original route down Old Hay Road to Route 6. At the junction of Coles Neck Road, the water main will continue down Route 6 and enter the town on Briar Lane, connecting to the water main on Main Street. The new path for the main will allow properties on Old Hay Road, Route 6, and Briar Lane to connect to the system. The existing water main on Coles Neck Road will remain to service the properties in the area of Coles Neck and the transfer station. The town's primary water source, the Boy Scout Camp Well Field near the Council on Aging Building, has two wells that are each approved to pump up to 100,000 gallons of water daily that flows through an 8-inch water main from the Wellfleet down Kahoon Hollow Road connecting to the water main on Main Street and serving the water tower on Lawrence Road. Currently, average daily usage on the water system is approximately 34,000 gallons daily around, across the year, a number that increases substantially in the summer months when more homes are open and population increases. Over the past five years, average daily usage during the six months from May through October has been approximately 45,000 gallons daily, a number that increases even more during the height of the summer season. In June of this year, average usage was just over 63,000 gallons daily. Under Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protections regulations for public water systems, the town's secondary water source, in this case, the Coles Neck Well Field, must meet the demand of the system in the event that the primary source, the Boy Scout Camp Well Field, and the related infrastructure is offline for any reason. The existing water main from Coles Neck Well Field cannot supply that demand due to the limited hydraulic flow of only 40,000 gallons per day. The likelihood that the Boy Scout Camp Well Field or the water main from that site is not available is indeed low. However, in June of this year, a lightning strike at that site damaged one of the wells and the control systems, requiring replacement of the equipment. It took several weeks to complete the repairs, during which time the town was reliant on manual operation of the remaining Boy Scout Camp well and the Coles Neck Well Field. The proposed development of 46 units of affordable housing is anticipated to increase demand on the water system by approximately 9,000 gallons daily, resulting in an increase from 35,000 up to 44,000 gallons, which exceeds the current hydraulic capacity of the Coles Neck Well Field. Installation of the new water main will ensure an adequate, reliable water supply from both the town's primary and secondary well fields, in accordance with the state's requirements. The proposed 8-inch main will also provide fire protection along the route of the water main, Old Hay Road, the section of Route 6, and Briar Lane. The water main along that route will also allow up to 80 additional properties to connect to the system, resulting in more revenue for the Water Enterprise Fund to offset the cost to fund and operate the system. As noted, the article requests approval of a Proposition 2.5 override to borrow up to the full estimated cost of the installation, $3.84 million. However, the Board of Water Commissioners hopes to secure a substantial portion of those funds through grants. In the event that the town were to borrow the full amount through a low-interest rate loan, the impact on the tax rate could be around seven cents per thousand, or $35 annually on a home assessed at $500,000. An initial small-town housing choice grant of $100,000 was received from the state last year to begin planning for the project, and in late August, the town of Wellfleet submitted a grant application for the full amount of the installation to the state's Executive Office of Housing and Economic Development through the MassWorks Infrastructure Program. The goals of that program are to expand affordable housing and economic development. In sum, the installation of the proposed new water main will correct a longstanding deficiency in the water system, improving reliability and redundancy of the system. It will also position the town to proceed with the much-needed affordable housing to serve the community and its residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hood, and you did just about make that in five minutes. Thank you very much. Further debate on the motion? Ms. Wilson?
I appreciate all the data that was shared by Mr. Hood, and he has done this in the past at other meetings. However, it is possible to supply the Lawrence Road project and improve the necessary hydrological flow for the whole system by replacing only the stretch of 4-inch pipes that run from the north Wellfleet well, the Grissmill Way well, to Route 6. That now goes across Route 6, connects to Altero Road, like the pipe which goes into Coles Neck Road, which connects up to the rest of the water system on Poldike Road. The Water Commissioners, in my opinion, should not recruit new hookups to pay their bills. This system will always have to get a little bit of money from the town. We just voted on something for the Marina Enterprise Fund. We have two enterprise funds, and they need help from the town. It was set up like this when it started, and that will just be the case until we're done with the debt service. It's not a lot, and hooking people up just to meet costs when you can simply raise rates or have seasonal rates, which charge more in summer, is something the Water Commissioners haven't done. Hooking people up that don't actually need, legally need, water from the water system is, in my opinion, environmentally a very bad idea. The Water Commissioners should not do this because groundwater is our most precious resource. We need to take a long view, a very, very long view, of how to manage its use. It should be conserved for emergencies, drought conditions, and the future needs of people whose drinking water is truly unpotable. And what if we had two fires in the middle of summer? The use for the water system's gallons per day, a few years ago, when we had in summer the fire on Main Street, was over twice what the normal gallons per day usage is. And that was allowable, but it put a big dent in what comes out of the groundwater. In other words, it happened okay, it didn't break anything, but we shouldn't have that happen often. It's not environmentally sound.
Ms. Wilson here in about three minutes?
Okay, one more thing. Yes, I can. Most of the cost of any extension also is not in what we'd be appropriating today if we vote for this. It's in the future operation, maintenance, and repair of the infrastructure forever into the future. And those costs, you have to replace pipes about every 30 years. Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
I'm going to ask to speak again, though.
After everybody else has, yes. Ms. Bacon, I believe it is?
Afternoon, Wellfleet voters. This did pass at the ballot box. This is an infrastructure problem that Wellfleet's been looking at for a number of years now. We have a chance to fund this problem with a grant from Mass Housing Works. So it's a complete win for the town as a way to get this done. Wellfleet's looking at some very big infrastructure expenses in the next several years, but the water needs to be expanded. The pipe is too small. We are sitting right now on what will hopefully be the future septic system for 46 units of mixed rental income housing. Wellfleet needs this. We need this for the firefighters that we've just approved to hire. They have no place to live. In addition to creating housing here, this substantial expansion of the water supports another business, another home, another family. Water is the staff of life. I'm not asking for a two-thirds vote on this from you today. I'm asking you to vote for this unanimously today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bacon. Ms. Carlson?
Yes, thank you. As former Chair of the Water Commission, I just want to respect Helen Wilson's passion, but add a few facts. The Wellfleet water system was developed under consent order from the state. We needed it because our water failed. It was developed with engineering companies to the state of the art. The option before you today by the current Board of Water Commissioners was developed with the grant. They worked with an engineering company. The option Helen ran by them, I believe they said no, if I'm my memory wrong, forgive me, but this is an engineering-approved option. Wellfleet has a very conservative and well-designed water system, and we now have the option to do needed expansion to much-needed redundancy, improve fire protection by getting out to Route 6, and as Kathleen so eloquently said, support Wellfleet's historic housing, affordable housing development. So for the sake of the water system and for the sake of a well-designed water system, an award-winning water system, I might add, and well-run water system, please support this article, and in doing so, support Lawrence Road, our much-needed affordable housing development.
Thank you, Ms. Carlson. Mr. Curley.
Yes, this is directed towards Mr. Hood. Mr. Hood, could you please give the Assembly the cost difference between replacing the Coles Neck pipe by itself as opposed to the route that's currently being proposed? Thank you.
Mr. Hood, for the purpose of answering the question, please?
Yes. The cost difference for the, between the Option 1, which was just as Helen was saying, going down just, replacing the Coles Neck Road water main, the difference between that and the proposal that we have in front of you today was $117,160, and that was, would have been that much less. It's insignificant, in my opinion, compared to the benefits of this new water main. One of the things that I failed to mention is the potential here for on, there are three food service businesses that will be able to connect to the water system on Briar Lane and on Route 6. A situation now where they are constrained and are under the same kind of regulations as the water system is in terms of not monitoring the condition of their water. So it's important for those businesses, it's important for Outer Cape L Services to have the potential to connect as well.
Thank you, Mr. Curley. Further debate, Mr. DeVasto.
I'd just like to also say that Briar Lane has a lot of small lots on it. Sometimes when those septic systems need to get upgraded, there's no way to move a leach field far enough away from their well, and there can be situations where, where they need to hook into town water on those small areas, and this would allow them to do that. This does not force people to hook into town water. As I feel Helen Select Board member Wilson suggested, we are not making people hook up. This simply allows for the expansion, and if we are thinking long-term, we have to think about the fact that we may need more town water infrastructure in the future. So in my mind, it doesn't make sense to do a half-measure at this time when we could set ourselves up for future needs for the town of Wellfleet.
Thank you, Mr. DeVasto. Ms. McElroy.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Elaine McElroy, and for the past year, I've been the Chair of the 95 Lawrence Road Rental Housing Pass Corps. And we have been very fortunate to have Jim Hood from the Water Commissioners serve on that pass corps, along with a member of the Select Board, a member of the Planning Board, a member of the School Committee, and housing representatives. And we're so grateful that at the Springtown Meeting of 2019, the town voted unanimously to allow the use of six acres surrounding the site where we're sitting right now to be used to create affordable housing. And we would really love to be able to keep moving forward with that effort. As we've all seen, even before COVID, there has been a growing inequity in access to housing here in town for our workforce, for our young families, for seniors, for the essential workers that... It's the passion, sorry. That Danny mentioned at the beginning. We've been reading in the paper that houses are selling at twice the rate they usually are for what they're asking for, often for cash. We would love to have you invest in the future of this town by supporting this effort to keep moving forward. Even though we authorized the borrowing, if for some reason all the stars do not align, the selectmen are not required... You can't hear me? Oh, gosh, okay.
Trying to cut down on the feedback. Ms. McElroy.
Okay. Even if all, even if we authorize this borrowing today, if for some reason all the stars don't align, as we all work together on this project, the selectmen are not required to borrow. We will all work together to try to bring this project forward in a positive manner. I do really respect the two different ways of looking at this. The Water Commissioners presented us with both of them and their reason for doing it. So I do, I do hope you'll support this. It does need a two-thirds vote, so. And I'm sorry if you couldn't hear me everything, but I can speak again if anybody has any questions about anything I said or that you didn't hear.
Yes, further debate? Sarah, is that Mr. Pachanas?
Yes. I'd like to ask the Moderator to Chief Curley, the Fire Chief, what the assessment of the fire department would need by this. Does that help the fire department or not? As far as fire hydrants and the safety of the town is concerned?
Chief Pauli, would you like to answer that question? Going to ask people to try to, instead of trying to face the audience, to face the microphone itself, to try to cut down on the feedback, if you would. You know, Chief Pauli, for the purpose of answering Mr. Pachanas's question. Could you give us, give the, yeah, go ahead.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
To answer Mr. Pachanas's question, first of all, I am in support of this article. We had a fire two weeks ago. We had a fire two weeks ago. We had a hydrant right within two hundred feet. We clearly saved a large exposure structure next to it. Things worked out well. With respect to the fire a couple of years ago at the old post office, we utilized that hydrant system. And again, we saved three exposures as we got to the building was fully involved. So obviously, the more money you have in hydrants, the better off we are.
Thank you, Chief Pauli. Further debate on the motion? Just a moment, Ms. Wilson, if there's other people. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Yes, I'm sorry, I can't tell who that is.
Hello, Laura Runkel?
Yes.
I'm just looking for some clarity on whether or not, along this new extension, people are required to hook up, or it's totally elective? I think I've heard both then.
Mr. Hood, for the purpose of answering the question?
Under the current regulations for the water system, no one is required to hook up. It's elective. And fortunately, we know that there are properties on Briar Lane that are interested in hooking up to town water because they have water issues currently. So it isn't just, you know, a question of putting a main in there and it not being used or that it's not necessary for those properties. There are properties that are experiencing water problems now and that can use, that would benefit from a water main extending down Briar Lane.
Thank you, Mr. Hood. Further debate? Just a moment. No one else? Is there anyone else who wants to speak once before someone speaks twice? Ms. Wilson?
Yes. We should deal with the wastewater issues along Briar Lane and close by, including Outer Cape Health and Moby Dick Restaurant, because we have to. It's time-sensitive. The town is being required to address this now by the DEP, by an entity that has brought soup to towns that haven't been addressing their wastewater issues under what's called the Two-O-A Plan. We are in the process of applying for a watershed permit that will have to address all the septic waste on those lots. And yes, Mr. DeVasto was right. It's very close set. That wastewater has to be removed from there because it's directly next to a wetland, and we are being required to mitigate pollution in the watershed going into wetlands and surface waters now. This is a burning issue. For years, we have looked at adding water systems, expanding water systems, and again and again, people have said, "Why aren't you doing the wastewater first?" I don't like that this article, which offers water to people who may or may not need it once they have their wastewater dealt with, which is going to have to happen pretty soon, I don't like having it linked with Lawrence Road, which I very much support, and I want to repeat. If that first length of pipe in North Wellfleet that has a too-small diameter is widened, and we're going to have to replace it anyway. It's been in the ground for a while, hydrological flow and enough gallons per day and redundancy will all be available. I was a Water Commissioner too. I was even the Chair, not for as long as Ms. Carlson. But I was also on the Water Issues Advisory Committee, and therefore, I have some credibility with this. And I care very much about protecting this resource. We don't need to hook up Briar Lane before we deal with its wastewater issues. We can come back to town meeting in spring if we need to and have that one length of pipe replaced if we vote against this today. And as Elaine McElroy said, if we vote for it, I sincerely hope that the Select Board will take a granular look at this issue gallon by gallon before they approve using this money at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Further debate? Ms. Wilson, Mr. Pachanas, you've already spoken once. Is there anyone else who hasn't spoken?
Danny.
I'm sorry, yes. Sir, I'm sorry, I can't tell who that is. Yeah, you can come up and use this mic if you'd like.
Hi, Kurt Felix, Chair of the Wastewater Committee and also a member of the Water Board. I think this is getting a little bit too confusing in terms of the debate. As far as wastewater goes, the most important, critical area of town is Duck Creek and Mayo Creek. This really doesn't have anything. This particular issue doesn't have anything to do with wastewater. Secondly, I'd just like to make an observation. About sixty-three percent of the rainwater that falls from the sky hits the ground and it flows through the aquifers. The other thirty-one percent actually goes through surface runoff, ponds, rivers, streams, et cetera. We only use one percent of the water that hits the Cape. That's according to Cape Cod Geological Assessment. So there's not a water shortage. There's not a wastewater issue. This is a question of either we go down Coles Neck and risk a grant that's economic development-oriented, which we're eligible for and more likely to get if we go down Route Six and up Briar Lane. We have the potential to also, and my biggest concern actually has always been Outer Cape. And Outer Cape has a well, a new well, and they had to move it there because their old well started to have water quality problems. There is concern that, at some point in time, that well may also start to look like their previous well, and they could have water quality problems. Running this line down Route Six would also serve as a backup, as an insurance policy for Outer Cape. And I think we'd be crazy not to take money, back up Outer Cape, and provide significant economic development benefits to the other users who currently don't have access to water. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Felix. Are you ready for the question?
Yes.
Okay. The motion before you is the motion made by Mr. DeVasto to accept and adopt Article Ten with the wording of the motion to be as printed in the motions booklet. Again, this is authorizing borrowing and will require a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the motion, please hold up your voter cards. All those opposed to the motion, please hold up your voter cards. Motion clearly carries by a two-thirds vote. Articles Eleven through Articles Fifteen are all community preservation, related to the Community Preservation Committee's proposals. I'm going to ask for unanimous consent that we consider Articles Eleven through Fifteen as a group. We can talk about them individually or ask questions if you like, but I'm going to suggest, for the sake of expediency, that we consider them as a group and take one vote. Is there unanimous consent to take Articles Eleven through Fifteen as a group? Does anyone object? Clerk will note unanimous consent to consider these as a group. May I have a motion, please?
I move.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. DeVasto.
I move that Articles Eleven through Fifteen be accepted and adopted with the wording of the motions to be as printed in the motions booklet.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Articles Eleven through Fifteen be accepted and adopted with the wording of the motions to be as printed in the motions booklet. Debate on the motions? Any questions? Are you ready for the vote? The motion before you is that Articles Eleven through Fifteen be accepted and adopted with the wording of the motions to be as printed in the motions booklet. These motions require a majority vote. All those in favor of the motion, please hold up your voter card. Are there any opposed? The motion carries on a unanimous vote?
I don't believe it was unanimous.
Oh, I'm sorry. I might have missed.
One dissenting.
Okay, I'm sorry. Motion carries on a majority vote. Thank you, Mr. DeVasto. It's a little hard to see. Article Sixteen, may I have a motion, please? Mr. DeVasto?
Yes. I move to accept and adopt Article Sixteen with the wording of the motion to be as printed in the motions booklet.
Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded that Article Sixteen be accepted and adopted with the wording of the motion to be as printed in the motions booklet. Debate on the motion? Mr. Curley?
Is this on? Yes, okay. So this is a request for Community Preservation Funds to go to the Cemetery Commission as part of their restoration plans for the Wellfleet Cemeteries. Unfortunately, how to say? Well, it's in the, if you look on your handout pages, page, what is it? It's in the middle. One, two, three. But anyways, there's pictures there. There's two pages of some of the restorations that have been done. They are not good. And because of that, I think that we need to pause any additional restoration work until we can get somebody that's qualified to actually do the work and oversee it and make sure it's done right, if any restoration work is done at all. It's a very small amount, but it is, I mean, the quality of the work is really bad. And it probably is permanently damaging some of the grave markers. And it's not done in a way that is respectful of the deceased's wishes either. There are instances where footstones have been set in concrete next to the headstones of the deceased rather than at the footstones where they belong. I think we need to always be respectful of those who are buried there as well as, you know, make sure that everything is done correctly in the first place. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Curley. Further debate? Mr. Agar?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name's David Agar, and I'm representing the Wellfleet Cemetery Commission in support of the CPC funding of ten thousand dollars to continue with our 2014 five-year strategic plan to improve the beauty, accessibility, perpetual care, and restoration of the grounds and historic headstones and other memorial markers in our Town of Wellfleet Cemeteries. As we are completing our fourth year of the plan, we are excited by the improvements, and we and our community partners and resident volunteers have made them with lots of efforts. We also recognize that there is a limit to the restoration of damaged headstones and memorial markers available to us. Most of the remaining fallen headstones are so damaged that we've decided that it's not worth the time, effort, and money to attempt to salvage them. During this past year, we have not been satisfied with the results of some of the attempts to rescue several of them, and not at the fault of the expertise of the professional craftspeople we've employed. To that effect, the focus of this coming year with this CPC funding will be the stabilization of upright headstones and the remounting and securing of downed intact markers in the Oakdale and Pleasant Hill Cemeteries off Gross Hill Road behind the police station. We invite you to please come and visit these cemeteries and view your tax dollars at work. In response to the lack of support for this funding by the Wellfleet Select Board, we can only express our disappointment that there was never any attempt on their part, individually or as a board, to contact us with their concerns about this funding or our past, current, and/or future goals. We thank you in advance for your support. And as an aside, we invite you to our annual Fall Cemetery Cleanup Saturday, September twenty-sixth, from nine to noon at Pleasant Hill and Oakdale Ceremonies. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Agar. Further debate? Ms. Carlson?
Yes, first of all, I can understand Mr. Agar's disappointment with the Select Board and not contracting his wonderful committee, but the COVID budget process was kind of tough. We were thrown things at us really fast, and I can see how our response can have been hurtful. So I apologize on behalf of the board. I know you're very committed and your board does good work. So reading between the lines of what you're saying, there's quite a lot of headstones on a limited basis, and there was a few restorations that perhaps your committee might have liked done differently too. And so you're going to maybe do next year a little differently, but that you remain committed to your good work. So that's how I'm kind of reading, interpreting what I just heard.
Thank you, Ms. Carlson. Further debate?
Danny?
Ms. Wilson and then Ms. Reinhardt? Ms. Wilson?
Yes. I, tomorrow, it's Sunday, there's a posted for the Select Board, if the quorum shows up, site visit to look at all these stones in real life. However, the pictures were very convincing. Something that I only learned more recently than our vote is that the same contractor was used and that people approached the Cemetery Commissioners and brought to their attention at meetings that some of the work was subpar. And I do understand how life gets in the way of committee work. And I'm not saying that Commissioners are doing a bad job, but I think scrutiny of, you know, attention given to the contractor work that was taking place year after year was perhaps not as regular recently as it might have been. And I think we should hit the pause button on this, and the Cemetery Commissioners can then maybe get a new contractor, whatever it is they decide to do. It's their decision. And to come back to us through the Community Preservation Act next year and get some more money. I don't have confidence in the process as it has gone on recently. So I was one of the people who voted not to recommend it.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Ms. Reinhardt?
So the planning, planning board, Select Board voted not to recommend unanimously, and it was, as Justina said, kind of a case of COVID where we were having Zoom meetings. And, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Agar, but I don't think anyone from the Cemetery Commission was on our phone call. And if they were, maybe we didn't see you raise your hand. But we didn't have the information. We had not been in discussion with the CPA Committee or the Cemetery Commission. So I have changed my recommendation. I do recommend this. It is really important to keep these going. We've opened up discussion with the Commission, and they get the idea and, I think, even agree with us in some of the cases. And we will work together to keep the cemetery looking good, maybe change contractors. But this is all starting to happen kind of now. So ten thousand dollars now, it's not even going to be appropriated for a while, and we can continue with it.
Further debate? Mr. Wolf? Somebody bring Mr. Wolf a microphone, please?
Yeah, I would, as important as I think it is to preserve these things, I would like to see some assurance that there is, in fact, going to be more scrutiny of these contractors. If these pictures are at all representative of what's been going on, that is pretty shoddy work. And as a contractor myself in the mechanical field, I don't see how this could be considered acceptable, even if it is only ten thousand dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Yes.
Mary Rogers?
I'm sorry, Mary. I didn't recognize her. Ms. Rogers?
Community Preservation Coordinator. I just want to say that the CPC grants are not tied to any vendor or contractor. The CPC grant goes to the Cemetery Commissioners, who, at their discretion, use the money. And as David just said, it's to stabilize the stones and not continue with the repairs, as you've seen some of the bad examples. Out of a hundred or so stones, you're seeing ten examples.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. Are you ready for the question?
Yes.
All right. The motion before you is the motion made by Mr. DeVasto to accept and adopt Article Sixteen with the wording of the motion. adopt Article 16 with the wording of the motion to be as printed in the motions booklet. Requires a majority vote. Those in favor, please hold up your voter card. Those opposed? The motion carries on a majority vote. Article 17, just one record in the warrant booklet, this was waiting for a recommendation from the Energy and Climate Change Committee. I have, I have two conflicting, the Energy Climate Change Committee recommends this. I'm not sure whether it was a vote, by a vote of five to zero or seven to zero. I'm not sure that it marries. Seven to zero, okay, thank you. The Energy and Climate Change Committee does recommend this by a vote of seven to zero. May I have a motion, please, Mr. DiVasto?
Yes, I move to accept and adopt Article 17 with the wording of the motion to be as printed in the motions booklet.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and, I'm sorry, moved and seconded to accept and adopt Article 17 with the wording of the motion to be as printed in the motions booklet. Debate on the motion? Ms. Shreves? I'm sorry, Ms. Ryan. My apologies.
Hi, I'm Suzanne Ryan. I'm a member of the Energy and Climate Action Committee. Today, the emphasis is on climate action. The committee made a proposal to request 50, up to $50,000 as a matching grant pool because in fiscal year '21, this, throughout this coming year, we plan on pursuing some projects, three to be exact, that have to do with vulnerable, low-lying roads in the area. They're vulnerable to sea level rise and storm surge, and these are roads that all of us have something to do with. We either live near them, work near them, one way or the other. There is 11 of them. They're, they're listed in the handout, so I won't read them, but it, you know, it's East Commercial Street, Kendrick. It can be as soon as the next really bad storm. There could be loss of life. There can be flooding. In the case of emergency, with flooding, it would be very hard for emergency vehicles to reach people in that area. So what we plan on doing through three grant projects is to first hire engineering consultants to assess these vulnerable areas and come up with plans and solutions, long-lasting plans. And then, after that, to hire contractors to do the work. And it's very expensive. We would depend on state money to get this done. However, these grants are very competitive. A lot of towns throughout Massachusetts are going after them. And there are two things that we can do to increase our likelihood of getting those, that grant money. One is to partner with other towns, and we plan on doing that. The other thing is to have matching funds. Matching funds are often required in order to get grant money in the first place. Not always, but often. So we're requesting up to $50,000 to have that in place. We might not use all that money, but indeed, having it there makes us investment-worthy in the eyes of state departments. And it also ensures that we have money in place in order to get this greater amount of money. So I do ask for you to vote in favor of that pooled money source for grant funding. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Ryan. Further debate? I've seen none. I'm sorry, did I miss somebody?
Yeah.
Yeah, Ms. Wilson, you've got, you've got to raise your hand so I can see you, please.
Sorry, a quick question. So, is this matching funds for grant projects? This would just be for the Energy and Climate Action Committee's use, not for, it wouldn't be like a fund that other groups could access. Is that correct?
Well, we initially asked for it in terms of our own needs. However, we'd like to, we, we would like to see it for climate action, climate-related grants ideally. There is, there is a likelihood that there would be fund money left over, that we wouldn't tap into all of it, so certainly indeed, it could be used for other grants or carried over into the following year for other grants. You know, we plan on, the committee plans on pursuing other climate-related projects in the future.
Thank you, Ms. Ryan.
Danny?
Ms. Wilson, you still have your card.
Yeah, the reason, the reason I was asking is, we all know the motions are different than what's actually in the warrant sometimes, but they have to be within the scope of what's in the warrant, and the summary here describes this article as allowing various town departments, committees, and boards to secure grants that require a matching contribution from the town. And what we have in our booklet is much more specific to the Energy Committee, so I think that, the second question I have is, who decides who gets to use these funds?
I think, my, my recollection is in discussion with Town Council, the, the, the way the article was worded was not specific, but Town Council, I believe, made a recommendation that the, the phrase "to be expended under the direction of the Select Board," the Select Board is the one ultimately who will make the decision about how these funds are expended. Am I correct on that, Mr. Giorgio? Yes. That was, that was a discussion that took place during the motions meeting with Town Administrator, with the Town Council and so forth, because the article itself was not specific as to that point, but the Select Board will be the ones to direct how these funds are expended. Further debate on the motion? Ready for the question? Motion before you is the motion made by Mr. DiVasto to accept and adopt Article 17 with the wording of the motion to be as printed in the motions booklet. All those in favor of the motion, please hold up your voter cards. Any opposed? The motion carries on a majority vote. Articles 18 through 21 are proposed to be taken as a consent agenda. Your booklet says 22, but in fact, the motion, I believe, will be made 20, I'm sorry, 18 through 21. Mr. DiVasto, may I have a motion?
Okay, I move that Articles 18 through 21 be accepted and adopted with the wording of the motions to be as printed in the motions booklet.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Articles 18 to 21 be accepted and adopted with the wording of the motions to be as printed in the motions booklet. These are articles, these five, five articles or so, if I did my math right, are ones that we bring up every year. They allow certain actions by the town. They're usually non-controversial, which is why we take them as a consent agenda. Are there any questions or comments, any debate on these motions? Seeing none, the motion before you is to accept and adopt Articles 18 through 21 with the wording of the motions to be as printed in the motions booklet. It requires a majority vote. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by holding your voter cards up. Any opposed? Motion carries on a majority vote. Article 22, may I have a motion, please?
So, Dan, there's an amended motion on this, I believe?
Yes.
Should, should I make the motion as printed and then?
No, let's, let's see if we can do this in one, one shot. Do you have the wording of the, Ms. Chivetta, do you have the wording of the amended motion? I, I have it, I'm sorry. There are a lot of moving parts here.
I don't have it here.
Give me, give me a second, please. I thought I did have it.
Oh, it's in the motions booklet?
Yes, the, if you can read it from the, it is, the one in the motions booklet.
Yep, okay, I see it, I'm sorry.
There you go.
I didn't know, I didn't know it had been changed in there.
Yes.
Okay. I move that the town, which has established a revolving fund for shellfish propagation in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53 E and a Half, vote to establish the total amount that may be expended from said fund for fiscal year 2021 at $50,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the town, which has established a revolving fund for shellfish propagation in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53 E and a Half, vote to establish the total amount that may be expended from said fund for fiscal year 2021 at $50,000. Two more, I'm sorry, one more recommendation on this. The Finance Committee, this was slightly different from what was originally in the warrant and the motion, so the Finance Committee took another vote on this. They recommend the, the adjusted amount by a vote of eight to zero. I do not have a recommendation on this from the Shellfish Advisory Board. I don't believe that they, they-
They did not meet before town meeting.
They did not meet before town meeting.
Excuse me, Mr. Moderator?
Mr. McGee?
Yeah, it was eight oh and one. We have one recusal on.
I'm sorry, eight oh one with one recusal. Thank you for the clarification. Debate, Ms. Chivetta?
So last year at town meeting, we created a revolving fund for shellfish propagation, which is funded by receipts from selling commercial and recreational shellfishing permits and collecting yearly aquaculture farm license fees. 75% of these receipts are now deposited into this revolving fund, while 25% are available to the Select Board to fund the town's budget. None of this money comes from taxpayer dollars. This year, we decided to take $40,000 to fund the shellfish department's budget line, 180, for propagation. But late in June, we pay, we became aware of a matching grant program from Barnstable County to offer COVID relief to shellfishermen while increasing Cape Town's ability to conduct shellfish propagation. One scenario would be that we would buy surplus oysters from farmers that they were not able to sell due to the crashing of the oyster markets this year, and we would put them in recreational shellfishing areas to bolster those resources because they have been so hard-hit by an increase in recreational shellfishing permit usage since COVID began. Therefore, I am requesting a $10,000 increase in order to be able to participate in this grant program, as well as any other initiatives that might come up that would allow us to increase our propagation activities while helping shellfishermen during these tough times. We need to request the total amount at town meeting, after which, every time the town, the department, the shellfish department wants to spend from the fund, it takes its proposals to the Shellfish Advisory Board and the Select Board for approval, so there is always oversight. Again, this is not coming out of taxpayer pockets. It comes from the people who use the resource. As Dan mentioned, the Finance Committee supported this increase, as did the Select Board, and unfortunately, the Shellfish Advisory Board was unable to meet, which is not uncommon in the busy summer months, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Chivetta. Debate on the motion? Any questions? Mr. DiVasto?
I would just like to state that I, I was unaware of when I voted to recommend this, that it could be used to purchase shellfish from farmers, and therefore, I, I would have been conflicted on that and, and recused myself, so I just want to make that part of the public record. I, I thought it was a simple movement of, of money to that expenditure for propagation purposes, so I just want to make that clear, that I, I changed my recommendation to an abstain.
All right, thank you for that, thank you for that clarification, Mr. DiVasto. Further debate on the motion? If not, the motion before you is that the town, which has established a revolving fund for shellfish propagation in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53 E and a Half, vote to establish the total amount that may be expended from said fund for fiscal year 2021 at $50,000. All those in favor of the motion, please hold up your voter card. Are there any opposed? I think I saw one. No, that's not a voter card. That's somebody shielding themselves from the sun. The motion carries on a unanimous vote. Article 23, I have, there were some recommendations that were not printed in the warrant. Article 23, the Select Board does not recommend by a vote of two to two to one, and the Recycling Committee recommends this by a vote of six to zero. May I have a motion, please, Ms. Shreves?
Yes, my name is Christine Shreves. I'm co-chair of the Recycling Committee. I move the town vote to amend its general bylaws, Article 7, General, by inserting a new Section 49, commercial single-use plastic water bottle ban, as printed in the warrant for the September 12th, 2020 Annual Town Meeting, under Article 23, with the exception of changing Section 4 to replace each reference to Town Manager with Town Administrator.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the town vote to amend its general use bylaws, Article 7, General, by inserting a new Section 49, commercial single-use plastic water bottle ban, as printed in the warrant for the September 12th, 2020 Annual Town Meeting, under Article 23, with the exception of changing Section 4 to replace each reference to Town Manager with Town Administrator. Debate on the motion, Ms. Shreves?
Yes, I would like to make a few comments in support of this article. Article 23 prevents town businesses from selling unflavored still water in plastic bottles under one gallon. The ban would go into effect one year from now, in September 2021. There is an exemption to this ban during declarations of emergency that affect the availability or quality of drinking water. This ban could be lifted during public health emergencies like the COVID-19 pandemic. This article is part of a regional campaign. 11 of 15 Cape Towns are voting on the same article this year. Bottled water is not safer than tap water. The majority of bottled water is filtered tap water, and is not as stringently tested as municipal water. Harmful chemicals in plastic can leach into beverages. Plastic is a human and environmental health hazard. It creates toxic emissions during production, recycling, and disposal. Plastic kills millions of seabirds and marine mammals annually. This article is about behavior change. 90,000 single-use plastic water bottles are consumed every minute in the U.S. and discarded. The vast majority of those bottles end up in landfills, or they are incinerated. There are better alternatives. Tap water in metal or glass bottles is more sustainable, safer, and cheaper. Bottles can be refilled at bottle refill stations in town buildings, at Baker's Field, and coming soon, at refill stations at the Marina and outside of Town Hall. When a convenience product, product is needed- When a convenience product is needed, water is available in pop-top or screw-top aluminum cans and in glass bottles. For public events, there are numerous options to hydrate participants. Both Oyster Fest and the July 4 Road Race were plastic-free last year and offered water in cans, aluminum cans. Wellfleet has installed bottle refill stations, as we've mentioned. We are the first outer Cape Town to vote on this article. Let's lead the way and vote yes on Article 23. If neighboring towns do not pass this article this year, we have the option to move out the effective date at the spring town meeting. Thank you for your support.
Thank you, Ms. Shreves. Further debate on the motion, Mr. Curley?
Yes, I move to amend the proposed bylaw under Section 3 by adding the sentence as one of the exceptions. The sentence is occurring subsequent to declaration of a heat emergency by the Emergency Management Director or other duly authorized town, county, Commonwealth, or federal official.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, Mr. Curley has made an amendment, which has been moved and seconded, to add this sentence, occurring subsequent to a declaration of a heat emergency, parentheses, by the Emergency Management Director or other duly authorized town, county, Commonwealth, or federal official, close parentheses. Debate is in order on the amendment, excuse me, on Mr. Curley.
Yes, so this amendment would allow commercial businesses and to provide, or have the potential to provide water that is in plastic bottles in the case that we have a high-heat event. They do happen in Massachusetts. Boston declared one over the summer where they were having sustained levels of heat. That makes hydration extremely important. And in those situations, I think it is critical to have as much or as great of a possible potential for supply of water to the citizenry so that they can have hydration, essentially. And that is the reason for the amendment. I am the Select Board member who abstained from it because I asked for this amendment and, yes.
Yeah, Mr. Curley, just where exactly, the way I have this, you have that at the end, where would you like that phrase inserted? What's your amendment is to insert that phrase where within the wording of the language? Oh, it's sort of standing alone by itself right now, and I'm just trying to make the grammar somewhat.
Yeah, so it's meant to be added to the one, but I wanted to try to make it clear rather than rewriting that entire sentence.
So after occurring to a subsequent?
Yes, just occurring subsequent to declaration of a heat emergency.
Okay. Declaration of a heat emergency, so you're really just adding the word "heat"?
Well, adding "heat" to the possible reasons for an exemption to be granted.
Okay. All right, I think that makes a little bit clearer, thank you. Yes, Ms. Carlson?
In terms of debate on the amendment, could we add weather emergency?
I'd like to just deal with one amendment at a time, please.
I understand.
It gets a little complicated.
Got it.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes, I read what the state defines as heat emergencies, it's quite precise, it's not a kind of ballpark thing, and it doesn't happen a lot. There are different stages of it, also clearly defined, and I'm very much in support of this amendment, it's a good exception to make to this, and it's a discrete period of time, in other words, heat emergencies don't go on forever. Thank you.
Further debate on the amendment, Ms. Shreves, would you like to speak to the amendment?
I would just like to ask the moderator or town council whether different types of emergencies need to be spelled out. If it's a declaration of an emergency, doesn't that cover any reason for an emergency?
Mr. Giorgio, would you like to weigh in on this? I don't think I'm qualified. I think the question is, is the word "emergency" broad enough to cover?
So, Mr. Moderator, through you to the previous speaker, I do think that the word "emergency" would cover a heat or a weather-related emergency. However, it's always, it's always good to be precise in your bylaws, so the addition of a reference to a heat or weather emergency, I think is fine. I would be certainly prepared to interpret the bylaw as it's currently written to include those, but as I said, it's always good to be precise.
Thank you, Mr. Giorgio, does that answer your question, Ms. Shreves?
Yes, it does.
Further debate on the motion, Mr. Curley, you've already spoken once, I'm sorry, Mr. Tucanian? Somebody's whispering into a mic. Please try to avoid doing that, the mics are all hot.
I would suggest that we vote on the bylaw as originally proposed, and the reason for doing that is because I suspect that we're unlikely to encounter a heat emergency between now and next May, and I'm really not a fan of trying to draft bylaws on the fly. Seems to me we have an opportunity to get, to address this issue and get it right over the winter, and perhaps now is not the time to be drafting on the fly. So I'd encourage you to defeat this amendment, not because it's unworthy, but because it'll give us a chance to make sure the grammar is right and the placement is right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tucanian. Further debate, Mr. Curley for the second time?
Yes, I would like to note that, as written, the only emergencies that qualify for an exemption are those affecting the availability of water, and that is very specific. If it doesn't say that if there is an emergency declared that doesn't affect the availability of water, that a use may be granted in that exception. I think, yes, heat emergencies are rare, I do think that is prudent to add them as one of the, or as an exception to the, or to grant an exception to the no-plastic-water bottles used in that exception. Thank you.
Okay, further debate, somebody over here wish to speak?
Melance Vetta? I would like to ask, how many towns have already voted on this and incorporated this?
The debate right now is on the amendment, if you would, please.
Okay.
Perhaps we can save a little bit of time. Ms. Shreves, could you answer that question, just so we don't have to come back to it again? But please remember, right now, we're talking about the amendment, not the motion, the main motion. Quickly, Ms. Shreves?
We are the first town to vote on it this fall. Two other towns on the outer Cape will be voting on it later this month. Orleans had a town meeting earlier this year during the pandemic and opted to indefinitely postpone for consideration at the spring town meeting.
All right, thank you, Ms. Shreves. Further debate on the amendment only, please. Sir, yes.
Yeah, this is Bonnie Shepherd. I would like to ask the moderator to read how Section 3 and exemptions, to read the Section 3 and exemptions with the amendment, the whole thing, so that we understand, because it sounded to me, from the conversation, like you're just going to put "heat emergency" in front of the existing language, and that would overly restrict the exemptions.
Well, I'll be honest with you, I'm not clear exactly where Mr. Curley intended that to occur. Mr. Curley, yes, sorry.
Just as its own separate sentence, I, basically as one of the exemptions, rather than, because that sentence otherwise would need to be rewritten completely, I thought it would be better just to include it at the bottom, or basically as a separate exemption, as a sentence, it basically repeats the granting authorities and says that an exemption could be granted. It does not have the seven-day time period applied to it either.
Okay, I'm not sure that completely answers the question. I'll be honest with you, I'm not exactly sure where to put this so that it makes grammatical sense, but, Mr. Giorgio, perhaps you could help us out?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, in order to achieve, I think, what the intent of Selectman Curley's amendment is, what I would suggest is that at the, at the end of the exemptions provision, there's a, has ended, there's a period, I would change the period to a comma, and then I would have Mr. Curley's amendment start, "or occurring subsequent to a heat emergency", with the additional language that he suggests.
Is that acceptable to the maker of the motion?
Yes.
Is that acceptable to the person who seconded the motion?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so, Ms. Shepherd, I think perhaps we cleared this up, with Mr. Giorgio's suggestion, the amendment, as proposed, would now remove the period at the end of Section 3, replace that with a comma, and then add the word "or" with the rest of the wording proposed by Select Board Member Curley, "occurring subsequent" and so forth. Are you ready for the amendment?
Excuse me, Danny, Danny.
I can't see who.
Look to your left.
Look to my left.
Over there.
Yes, is that Ms. Chivetta?
Nancy Chivetta?
Yes.
So, I understand town council saying, like, precision is more important, but I tend to think that leaving the word, like, "emergency" that could apply to more events is better. And the other thing is that this isn't precluding people from buying water in gallon jars, and I would think in an emergency, you would be buying more water and not single-serve. You would be stocking up for a weather or a heat emergency, and that would seem like a gallon would be better than a single-serve.
Thank you, Ms. Chivetta. Are you ready for the amendment?
Yes.
Is there somebody back there who, no, I guess not. All right, the motion before you right now is the amendment offered by Mr. Curley, and that amendment would add the phrase at the end of Section 3 of Article 23, and it would now read, "or occurring subsequent to a declaration of a heat emergency by the Emergency Management Director or other duly authorized town, county, Commonwealth, or federal officials." We're voting right now solely on the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment, please hold up your voter cards. Those opposed to the amendment, the amendment loses by a majority vote.
Really?
Yes, I think that's pretty clear to everyone. Okay, we're back to discussing the main motion, the motion before you, the motion made by Ms. Shreves under Article 23. Is there further debate on the main motion, or are you ready for the questions? Yeah, Ms. Carlson?
Yes, thank you, Danny. I was one of the Select Board members who regretfully voted against this amendment, and there's a couple of reasons. First of all, I wanted to pick up on a comment by the Recycling Committee member. She mentioned that we can use tap water, and that bottled water is not as clean as municipal water, which, well water, which is true, but the majority of Wellfleet residents do not have municipal water, and filling up a water bottle from the tap simply isn't an option, a safe option, for a lot of Wellfleet residents. So I wanted to clarify that fact. Second of all, she said, this bylaw is about behavior change. I am uncomfortable with behavior change being legislated by the Recycling Committee. I think we're getting behavior change, my behavior has changed, and I like to think individuals should have the choice over their behavior change. Third of all, I think that this bylaw unfortunately overlooks the realities of many of our Wellfleet residents who work with their hands for a living, with trucks, on the flats, in construction, in hot kitchens, out there landscaping in 90-degree heat, on the rush, on the fly, who need to hydrate, who need to stop a combi, who need to grab some water. They're not, like, walking around the pier with a water bottle. These are men and women who are hydrating in 90-degree heat, and they don't always have, like, a nice water bottle that they fill up at home. And so, I don't think we should be legislating people's behavior change when they don't know what their lifestyles are. I think we should trust that everybody cares about the environment, and everybody is doing their best to change their behavior, and we don't need a bylaw to make people do the right thing. And so that was why I voted no against this bylaw.
Further debate, Mr. DeVastow?
Yeah, I was the other person who voted no on this bylaw for similar reasons that Select Board Member Carlson has mentioned. Also, the fact that this only pertains to water bottles. In some ways, incentivizing people who are on the fly to be purchasing carbonated beverages that can be closed, or Gatorade, or those sorts of beverages rather than water, it doesn't eliminate plastic water bottles in town, single-use plaster water bottles, by any means. So, I think that, you know, when it comes down to it, and people are on the fly from job site to job site, or have very limited time, and maybe not living in town, or passing through town, or are working in town, and don't have access to necessarily potable water for them to fill up a water bottle, this sort of restricts them to being able to purchase a bottle of cold beverage that can be sealed or resealed while they're in their vehicle, or taking it to a job site, or throwing it in a cooler. And I'm not so sure that we will have affordable options in time to replace these single-use water bottles that people rely on. I'd much prefer an approach to trying to encourage people to use reusable waters, to have water filling stations, and get people to change their behavior through those means, rather than a ban on something that may actually have the unintended consequence of selling more Gatorade and Pepsi than water.
Further debate, Ms. Wilson? Ms. Shreves, you've already spoken once, please, Ms. Wilson?
No, I spoke to them.
No, I didn't, Ms. Wilson, I said Ms. Shreves spoke once, Ms. Wilson?
Thank you. Thank you, I was one of the Select Board members who voted for this. I think it's not conservative enough. This country and people who appreciate the convenience of just being able to buy a bottle of water, and then throw it away, probably without recycling it, we're all going around a corner here. We have to change our behavior within 10 years. I guess I hope that there will be no more plastic bottles at all. And I think that, I know lots of people who work outdoors and landscapers, other people who work, you know, in the hot sun, I'm one of them part of the time. And we're all learning how to hydrate better, there's a lot of information about it, we're all learning how to bring our own water. Most of Wellfleet is on well water, and it's good, and the people that aren't are often on the municipal system, about 270-something people are on the municipal system now, and they have good water, too, except when the system's being flushed, when they can't drink it. it. In any case, we are going around a big bend in the river, and this should have happened yesterday, and I don't, all we can do here is play catch-up. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Further debate, anyone who hasn't spoken, who wishes to speak, yes, toward the rear there, sorry, I can't say that far, who is this?
Name is Ted Thomas, speaking as the moderator.
Mr. Thomas.
This is exactly what Nestle, Pepsi, and Coca-Cola wants, you to kick this bottle down the road. The plastic issue is not just Wellfleet, it's not just Cape Cod, it's a global issue. When I first saw this, my reaction was, that didn't reach out far enough. What about the plastic beverage bottles, all the other bottles? What about the nips on the side of the road? So, what got us here? What got us here is corporations make something convenient, they put water in a small bottle, and it's how we handle that small bottle. Some of us still do not recycle, some of us litter. So, the ones who litter, obviously don't recycle. And some of us, who have the nips and throw them to the side of the road, they obviously don't recycle, they litter, and they drink and drive. So, when you're just talking plastics and Wellfleet, you've got a recycle problem, you've got a litter problem, and you've got a drinking and driving problem. My second reaction was singling out the single water bottle, small water bottle, actually maybe did reach far enough, because we're humans, and we don't like change. So, this is a baby step that needs to be taken, and a change we must take, because time's running out on pollution, on climate change, and a thousand other things, but we're talking about a water bottle. So, we have the opportunity today to set the tone for the rest of Cape Cod, so if we do it, we vote this in, and the other towns voted in, that we have some bargaining power so that we can go and maybe get, seek help from Pepsi, Cola, or Nestle, and write this for the environment, so that maybe we can be on this planet a little bit longer. So, let's look at this really hard and think, let's not kick this bottle down the road, let's vote it the right way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Further debate?
Hi, David Holstrom. I want to speak in favor of this, again with the reservation that, I'm sorry, it doesn't go even farther. I am one of the people that, you know, consistently recycles all of my plastic containers, and I was very disturbed to read recently that this seems to be somewhat of a scam. It turns out that most of the plastic, especially plastic beverage containers that go into the recycling stream do not in fact get recycled, they go into the dump, because it's not economical to recycle them. And if they are recycled, they can be reused at most once. It turns out that the push to recycle beverage containers was largely pushed by the plastics industry, basically to fool people into thinking that they were being recycled when they weren't, because it's cheaper to produce new ones. I guess that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Holstrom. Are you ready for the questions?
Yes.
No, I guess not. Sir, is that Mr. Cumbler? I'm sorry, I can't, I, okay, yes, Mr. Cumbler? I'm sorry, I may have jumped over somebody else, but it's hard to see. Mr. Cumbler?
I'm going to address just one of the many positive things, excuse me, one of the comments they made, which is you shouldn't legislate behavior. How many of you remember flying on airplanes when people smoked on them? How many of you remember going to movie theaters where you could see the smoke in the theater? How many of you remember going to restaurants where you had to decide when you would go, whether you were going to be out-smoked in the restaurants? And yet, today, we can go to restaurants, those of us who don't want to be in smoke-filled rooms, we can go to restaurants, we can fly without, well, not today, but we could fly without smoke, people on the airplane smoking, we could go to theaters without people smoking. We legislated that behavior. In fact, most of the negative behavior that we participate, involved, are involved with that hurt this environment, have been legislated out, and we now accept that as common behavior. If you see someone try to smoke in a restaurant, you would be annoyed, and think, what's the matter with that person? This is a simple step that will legislate something that will become common behavior down the road. We need to do the legislation, because if we don't, we will just ignore it, the way we ignored smoking, even though it was clear it was a bad thing to do.
Thank you, Mr. Cumbler. Is somebody else there? I'm sorry, I can't see who that is. Yes?
Hi, my name is Kathy Shore. Just two quick points. One is that a lot of the discussion against this has been on the basis that people need to be able to rehydrate, and we don't want them buying Coke instead of water. The reality is, this is an issue that's been working for a while. There are other models for the single-use container that are less harmful, you can now buy water in, kind of like juice box containers. I've been at an event in Provincetown where we locally sourced hundreds of bottles like this, that nearly the same cost as plastic bottles. The other thing to keep in mind, I work with a group that does extensive research on plastics in our local waters and on our local beaches, of tens of thousands of, probably over 100,000 pounds' worth of this. The research shows that 51% of it comes from single-use, disposable-use, and the biggest, I believe, is plastic water bottles.
Thank you, Ms. Shore. Are you ready for the question?
Yes.
Yes? Okay, the motion before you is the motion made by Ms. Shreves, that the town vote to amend its general bylaws. I think you have the wording of the motion in your motions booklet, the only difference between that and that which is in the warrant, is that the reference to Town Manager will be replaced by the words Town Administrator. This is a motion to amend our bylaws, it requires a majority vote. All those in favor of the motion, please hold up your voter cards. Okay, those opposed to the motion, please hold up your voter cards. The motion clearly passes by a majority vote. Article 27, may I have a motion, please? I'm sorry, 24. Article 24, may I have a motion?
Um-
Mr. DeVasto?
Yep. I move, okay, that's not, I move to accept and adopt Article-
24.
24, with the wording of the motion to be as printed in the motions booklet.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept and adopt Article 24, with the wording of the motion to be as printed in the warrant booklet. Debate on the motion? Any questions? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye, I'm sorry, by holding up your voter cards. We'll get there eventually. Those opposed to the motion? The motion carries on a voice, on a majority vote. Article 25, may I have a motion, please?
So, I'm not too clear on this, I know there's two motions out there, I'm not sure if I should read the one-
I think, Mr. Cumbler, are you prepared to make the motion? Yes, okay.
Okay.
Mr. Cumbler, please.
I move that the town vote to amend Article 5 in the general bylaws by inserting a new Section 39 as proposed to the September 12, 2020 annual town meeting, under Article 25. The town of Wellfleet recognizes that the climate emergency driven by human activity, including energy consumption, land use practices, lead to global warming, rising seas, deadly storms, dangerous heat waves, acidifying oceans, melting ice sheets. All this poses an immediate threat to the health, safety, and economic security of the residents of the town. The town of Wellfleet therefore will undertake the goal of reducing net greenhouse gas emissions from human activity within and by the town to zero by the earliest technical and technically and economically feasible time, but no later than 2050. The town will direct all officers, departments, committees, and representatives of the town to take such measures within the scope of their respective responsibilities and authority, as may be necessary and prudent to facilitate such objections. And I speak afterwards, right? Speak to it afterwards?
You may, yes. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded at the town, I'm going to read this again, because I don't think you have the full text, it was changed slightly from your motions booklet, so I'm going to read it once more. It's been moved that the town vote to amend Article 7 in its general bylaws by inserting a new Section 39 as proposed to the September 12, 2020 annual town meeting, under Article 25. The town of Wellfleet recognizes that the climate emergency driven by human activity, including energy consumption and land use practices, which lead to global warming, rising seas, deadly storms, dangerous heat waves, acidifying oceans, and melting ice sheets, poses an imminent threat to the health, safety, and economic security of the residents of the town. The town of Wellfleet therefore will undertake the goal of reducing net greenhouse gas emissions from human activity within and by the town to zero at the earliest technically feasible, technically and economically feasible time, but no later than 2050. The town will direct all officers, departments, committees, and representatives of the town to take such measures within the scope of their respective responsibilities and authority, as may be necessary and prudent to facilitate such objectives. Debate on the motion, Mr. Cumbler, the floor is yours.
Under the Global Warming Solution Acts of 2008, as well as the Baker Administration's formal determination in April of 2020, net zero, the state is required to reach net zero greenhouse gas emissions by 2050. So, what this does is it puts the town in line with the state, and there's two very important points on this. One is, this is not a resolution, it's a bylaw. And the reason we're asking for a bylaw as opposed to a resolution, is a resolution sort of signifies, this is what I would like to do. I, for example, resolve every three years to learn French. By the way, I don't know French, even though I've been resolving to do that for years and years and years. If it was a bylaw, that is, if I were required to learn French to hold my job, I assure you, I would learn French. So, what we're asking the town of Wellfleet to do, is not to resolve to do something, but to make it a law that we have to do it. We have to reach this goal. This is a town law, all town officials, every town act will have to be made in terms of the goal of reaching net zero 2050. I think if we make it a resolution, we're saying something, we want to feel good about ourselves. If we make it a bylaw, it says, we want to make sure it happens. And the sad thing is, we're making sure it happens, not for most of us in this room, or, excuse me, this field, but for the children who are not here. 2050, most of us aren't going to be around, but the world our children face will be. And if we don't do something now to make that world different substantially, they are not going to be, have a world that they will want to live in. It's important that we in this town do more than just say, this is what we want. Saying it's what we want, but not doing something, is a little bit like the person who are remediating the consequences of global greenhouse gases, without actually doing something to eliminate global greenhouse gases. It's a little bit like the person who, because of lung conditions, is on oxygen support, but still smoking. It's time we outlaw that person from smoking.
Thank you, Mr. Cumbler. I neglected to tell you, there are two recommendations that were not available when the warrant was printed. The Select Board recommends this by a vote of four to one, and the Energy and Climate Action Committee recommends by a vote of six to one. Further debate on the motion, Ms. Carlson?
Yes, I have a question for Mr. Cumbler, and then a possible amendment. John, is the language that you read from the state of Massachusetts already binding on Wellfleet?
Mr. Cumbler? Perhaps you should stay a little closer to the microphone in case there are other questions.
As I understand it, the Governor's Initiative and the Global Solutions Act are represented statewide, but they don't specifically account for the actions of what we do in our town. So, that we could have, you know, limited reduction, but say, Boston has significant reduction. What this says is that we will be in line with the state, we'll do our part to reach net zero.
Ms. Carlson, just a moment. Did that answer your questions?
I'm now going to propose an amendment, and I think I said in the beginning, I had a question for John, and then I may have an amendment.
Yes.
This laudable amendment that John's put forward, and thank you for it, quantifies nothing about the cost to Wellfleet of the net zero, and as a coastal town, we'll be also facing any number of environmental threats and costs. So, I recommend that we take out the no later than 2050 time goal, because we do not know how much all of our competing goals-
Ms. Carlson, I need you to make the amendment first before you give your argument for it, please.
I'm sorry, my amendment is take out the no later than 2050.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to remove the words, but no later than 2050. Debate is on that amendment. Ms. Carlson, if you want, if you-
And I thought that's what the Select Board voted on last night, but I guess my recollection was wrong.
No, you're correct.
Yeah, we voted on that last night at the Select Board. We don't have any costs.
All right, further debate, Mr. DeVasto and then Ms. Wilson. Mr. DeVasto?
So-
This is on the amendment, please.
On the amendment, exactly, yeah. So, initially, I had, when we went over this yesterday, I felt that I didn't have quite enough information about what the state was doing in order to put it in our bylaws that we would achieve net zero emissions by 2050. I do have here a determination of statewide emissions limits for 2050. It is not a mandate that the state do that at this point, as far as I can see, but it does state that it is feasible, and this is from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, from the Secretary of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. That makes me a little bit more comfortable to vote for this recommendation, because I think the state kind of holds the cards in a way as to how we can access the means to become, to become net zero in our greenhouse gas emissions. For the town to do it alone may prove quite difficult. We know right now that we don't have the capacity to just go there, we hope by 2050 that we can. The state of Massachusetts seems ready to commit to that number. I do actually think that in this case, maybe we can push the state a little bit. I mean, bylaws can be amended, dates can be pushed back in the future if we can't get to that. But I think by putting the 2050 date, where the state has seen that as a feasible date, and has issued this determination, I am comfortable. I had said that I would abstain from voting to recommend if the words "by 2050" were in it at the meeting last night, then I received this determination, and based on the language where it says, by, as feasible, in the original motion, in the original article, I'm comfortable voting for the one that Mr. Cumbler read at this point. for the one that Mr. Kumbler read at this point.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes, I suggest, for all the reasons that people have listed, in favor of leaving the language of 2050 in the article, I want to call your attention to the leniency of this. So that if the DPW can't replace a car in a totally green, you know, a vehicle in a totally green way one year, earliest technically and economically feasible efforts are what this goal is asking for. In other words, if you have a choice, if there's the money, you try to do it. And we've already reached a 20% goal of this without even really being aware of it that the state set. So, once again, we're going around a big bend in the river. We need to have done this yesterday. It's all about catch-up. I urge you to leave the 2050 in there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Further debate?
I think the state...
Mr. Elkin, yeah.
Richard Elkin, Chairman of the Energy Climate Action Committee. The state is well ahead of what you're giving them credit for. The Global Solutions Act of 2008 mandated that by 2020, that is now, we have a 25% reduction below 1990 levels. That is current state law. We have been. It also mandated that the governor set a limit from 2030 and 2040, and the state law mandated zero net, no, less than 20% zero net, zero of 1990 by 2050. On April 22nd of this year, the governor changed that to zero net emissions in 2020. That is the current state law. Saying, taking it out of our bylaw is saying we missed the point. Now, we, the governor also announced on April 22nd that by the end of this year, he would set a goal for 2030 and 2040. 2030's goal is mandated that he set it by state law. It's expected he will set a goal of 50% of 1990 levels by 2030 unless, as the comments that the DDP, Department of Energy, heard, recommended 66% below 1990 levels. But I expect it will be 50% below 1990 levels because both houses of the legislature have passed that as goals in separate bills. So we have to recognize the state is ahead of us, and we have to act according to these guidelines. And the guidelines are 0% by 2050, and probably 50% of 1990 by 2030. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elkin. Again, the motion before you right now is the amendment that was offered by Ms. Carlson. Are you ready to vote on the amendment?
I got a piece.
All right. The motion before you is to remove the phrase "but no later than 2050" from the motion that was made by Mr. Kumbler. All those in favor of the amendment, please raise your voter card. Those opposed to the amendment, raise your voter card. Okay, the amendment failed. We are now back to consideration of the main motion. Are you ready for vote on the main motion?
Yes.
Have somebody, somebody in the back there?
Please.
Somebody who hasn't spoken? Yes?
It is, it's David Wright.
David Wright.
To you, Mr. Moderator. I guess it's a question for Mr. Kumbler. Before I vote, I'd like to be absolutely clear on one thing. We're talking about the greenhouse gas emissions generated by the town as a municipality? Or are we talking about individuals within the town? For instance, Helen mentioned the machines that the DPW uses. That's very different from having an officer telling someone that they have to turn off their car at the post office parking lot, or that they have to get an electric lawnmower. Which are we talking about?
Mr. Kumbler, are you able to answer that briefly?
No.
Dick, correct me if I'm wrong. We're talking about the town's emissions, correct?
That's what I'm asking you. Is it the town's municipality?
Please do not debate one another.
Well, I know, I'm just...
The question, the question that Mr. Wright asked was, does this refer to individuals or does it refer to the town?
Dick, do you want to clarify that? My understanding is it's for the town. Not telling about individuals can't have, you know, their cars.
Mr. Elkin, are you able to shed any light on this? We can't hear you without a microphone, I'm sorry.
I believe that the state law sets a goal for the whole state of Massachusetts, towns and individuals, to have net zero greenhouse gases because it's one planet we're trying to save.
Thank you, Mr. Elkin. Further debate, Mr. Wolf.
It appears we're being asked to vote on a motion which the proponents of the motion are not clear on what it covers. Is it individuals? Am I going to be forced to remove my oil burner and put something else in to heat my house if I'm economically unable to do that? Am I going to have to not use a weed whacker or whatever it is? Or is the town, or our town department's going to be asked to, for instance, get an electric backhoe for the, for the transfer station or something like that?
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Further debate, sir.
Dick Elkin, Chairman of the Energy Committee. This article affects town offices and individuals, and its motivation was not the, was that the town, acting as a town, is not paying attention to the goals. Particularly, the town is going to vote this spring on a new proposed high school. And that high school will not be zero greenhouse gas emissions as currently planned. But that high school will last well beyond 2050, we hope. Now, about an hour ago, we voted on $110,000 for the elementary school because somebody took a shortcut and left out a sprinkler system, which was required by law even at the time. We know now that by 2050, the state as a whole will have to achieve zero greenhouse gas emissions. And yet, we have the town, as part of the regional school system, proceeding with a school that will not be zero greenhouse gas emissions because it was, quote, "too expensive." They didn't look at it carefully enough. They didn't look at not making it zero energy, but simply using ground source heat pumps. Because on a project as large as this, a ground source heat pump, which will be zero greenhouse gas emissions, is roughly the same cost as what they're planning. Maybe a little more, maybe a little less in the long term. Who knows? It's a...
Mr. Elkin, I think you, I think Mr. Wolf's question was specifically about would this mandate things for individuals?
This is for individual, I'm sorry, this is for...
This is for the town, as I understand it.
The town offices. I thought I was...
Yeah, thank you. Are you ready for the, are you ready for the question?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, yes.
I think, I think most people are ready for this question. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm all the questions.
I'm just unclear on some...
Okay, Mr. DeVastoe, quickly, please.
Okay, so I just want to clarify this because it seemed to me that one of the proponents of the article had stated that individuals are part of the town and therefore are required. And I'm not so clear that what, what Mr. Elkin said is, is the opposite of that.
Okay, let me, let me see if Mr. Giorgio can shed some light on this.
Mr. Moderator, the bylaw as drafted does not include any mandates on individual residents. The only mandate is with respect to town facilities and town conduct, but not individuals.
Thank you, Mr. Giorgio. Ms. Wilson, did you need to add anything? Are you, are you ready for the question?
Yes.
Yes, I think, I think most people have, have heard enough to be able to make an educated vote. The motion before you is a motion made by Mr. Kumbler. I'm not going to read it again. It essentially is similar to the language... Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Easley?
I think you got to read it because it's not how it's written.
Okay, I will, I'll be happy to read it. I'll read it as quickly as I can. The motion before you is move that the town vote to amend Article VII in its general bylaws by inserting a new section thirty-nine as proposed to the September 12th, 2020 annual town meeting under Article 25. The town of Wellfleet recognizes that the climate emergency driven by human activity including energy consumption and land use practices which lead to global warming, rising seas, deadly storms, dangerous heat waves, acidifying oceans, and melting ice sheets poses an imminent threat to the health, safety, and economic security of the residents of the town. The town of Wellfleet therefore will undertake the goal of reducing net greenhouse gas emissions from human activity within and by the town to zero at the earliest technically and economically feasible time, but no later than 2050. The town will direct all officers, departments, committees, and representatives of the town to take such measures within the scope of their respective responsibilities and authority, as may be necessary and prudent to facilitate such objectives. The motion is a proposal to amend of general bylaws, requires a majority vote. Those in favor of the motion, please hold up your voter cards. Those opposed, please hold up your voter cards. The motion passes by a majority vote. Article 27, may I have a motion, please?
Ah, okay, I, I have a motion to indefinitely postpone Article 27.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to indefinitely postpone Article 27. There's also a recommendation from the Conservation Commission. The Conservation Commission does not recommend, or did not recommend this by a vote of six to zero to one. The Open Space Committee did recommend by a vote of seven to zero. Mr. Herter?
Yes.
Hard to tell behind the mask.
Yeah, I'm Bruce Herter, Chairman of the Open Space Committee. And to explain this, early on, the Conservation Commission did agree with us that this very valuable land should go to their custody. The problem is that there are a number of groynes in that area. There are small jetties on the beach, and the Conservation Commission is responsible for making decisions around those groynes. They felt that there would be a conflict of interest in both taking custody of the land and, and making their decisions, so they stated that they do not want to accept the property.
Thank you, Mr. Herter. Further debate on indefinite postponement? If not, the motion before you is to indefinitely postpone Article 27. All those in favor of the motion, please hold up your voter card. Any opposed? The motion carries on a unanimous vote. Article 28, may I have a motion, please?
Yes.
Mr. DeVastoe?
I move to accept and adopt Article 28 with the wording of the motion to be as printed in the motion's booklet.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept and adopt Article 28 with the wording of the motion to be as printed in the motion's booklet. Mr. Herter, would you like to speak to this?
In the, at the end of the booklet, there's a map of the land that we are talking about putting into conservation. And these are properties that are but at Blackfish Creek and include classification of Barrier Beach, Coastal Dune, and Salt Marsh. 209, which is over to the right side of the map, is a 1.5 acre wetland area. 210 is a 7.41 area, 7.5.73 a tidal, and 1.66 upland beach area. 201 is a 0.2 acre town water access. It's a path to the water so that we remain, we're able to continue to have access. All are within areas of critical environmental concern and the flood zone.
Thank you, Mr. Herter. Again, I'm sorry, I meant to tell you, the, on Article 29, the recommendations that we're missing, the Open Space Committee recommends by a vote of seven to zero, and the Conservation Commission does recommend by a vote of six to zero to one. Any debate on the motion? Ms. Wilson?
Yes, I'd like to remind people that if the Conservation Commission has management of this, the only thing that really changes is that once a year, they go and eyeball it. And this is in, relative to Kinder Avenue, a somewhat remote spot. And for example, in terms of public access to water, little parcel 201, which I've seen, does need to be eyeballed by somebody who works for the town regularly so that nobody blocks it off. And 210 and 209 also need to have a responsible board going around, making sure nobody's doing anything bad on there. And otherwise, whether or not it's under the management of the Conservation Commission formally, it's in their jurisdiction. In other words, it doesn't matter who owns something, who manages it or who owns it, if it's within 100 feet, if it's in the resource under the jurisdiction of Conscom, they have a lot to say about what you can do for it, on it, and it protects it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Further debate on the motion?
Danny?
I'm sorry, Mr. DeVastoe?
I just have a question about this because I know that the lands are, any, any wetland is under the jurisdiction of Conservation Commission. I'm wondering, does this affect any abutting properties or is there really a need for them to own these properties? Or does the town actually retain ownership even though it's under the jur, under the care, custody, and management of Conscom? I'm not quite clear about the...
Mr. Herter, if you can answer that?
Yeah, there are two advantages to moving on this. One is just what Helen said. That is, that once a year, the open space with Conscom go and evaluate these places and look at them. The other, though, is that there is another step that gets taken. The town owns the land, they continue to own the land, but when this goes, when this is taken into custody, that means that if you wanted to do something else, if somebody else said, let's put a Ferris wheel there, as Helen said, you know, Conscom has some say on that. What this does, though, is it has to go to the state, and you have to get a state vote. If people remember, there was some property some years back that was in conservation, and somebody wanted to put a septic in there. Town meeting said, okay, but that had to go to the state. So it's an extra layer of protection, which I think is worthwhile.
Thank you, Mr. Herter. That answer your question, Mr. DeVastoe?
Uh, yeah.
Thank you. Are you ready for the question?
Yes.
Okay, the motion before you is a motion made under Article 28 to accept and adopt Article 28 with the wording of the motion to be as printed in the motion's booklet. All those, I'm sorry, this does require a two-thirds vote because it's transferring custody, care, and control of a piece of town property. All those in favor of the motion, please hold up your voter cards. Any opposed? The motion appears to carry by a unanimous vote. Article 29, may I have a motion, please? Mr. DeVastoe?
Yep, I move to accept and adopt Article 29 with the wording of the motion to be as printed in the motion's booklet.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept and adopt Article 29 with the wording of the motion to be as printed in the motion's booklet. Debate or questions on the motion? Yes, Mr. Tucanian. Maybe quicker, we'll get you some exercise. Maybe quicker, we'll get you some exercise.
Yes, Harry Turkanian. Just quickly, normally when I see articles like this, they contain language that the terms of the easement are to be on such terms and conditions as are determined by the Board of Selectment or similar language. And so normally, I'd like to see if the town's going to grant an easement like this, it'd be on a condition that any installation, repair, maintenance be done to the satisfaction of the town, because we're digging up a paved town road. And second, I think it would be customary to see a requirement that the person or the individual who has granted the easement indemnify the town against claims arising out of the exercise of the easement. So I'd like to propose to amend Article 29 to add the language, "upon such terms and conditions as the Board of, the Select Board shall determine."
Do you have that in writing, or can I remember that?
I do not.
Upon such terms, could you repeat that, please?
Add conditions as the Select Board shall determine.
It's been moved and seconded to add the phrase, "upon such terms as the Select Board," terms and conditions. As the Select Board requires?
Determine.
Determine.
Okay, I think I've got this right now. The amendment proposed by Mr. Turkanian is to add the phrase, "upon such terms as conditions, and conditions as the Select Board shall determine." Any debate on the amendment? If not, all those in favor of the amendment, please hold up your voter cards. Are there any opposed? The amendment carries on a unanimous vote. Are you ready for the motion?
Yes.
Okay, the motion before you is that, as the motion, I move to accept and adopt Article 29 with the wording of the motion to be as printed in the motion's booklet and as amended with the phrase, "upon such terms and conditions as the Select Board shall determine." This, again, proposes to allow some certain activities to take place on town property and requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the motion as amended, please hold up your voter cards. Is there anyone opposed? The motion as amended carries on a unanimous vote. Article 30, may I have a motion, please?
I move that Article 30 be indefinitely postponed.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Article 30 be indefinitely postponed. Mr. DeVasto, would you like to explain briefly?
Hmm.
Or not?
Um, I actually don't, somebody else should...
Ms. Wilson, if you could explain.
Yeah, this was basically a housekeeping article, and the process for getting it before the town was not followed according to town council as exactly as it should be. So it'll come up on our next warrant. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Further debate? The motion before you is to indefinitely postpone Article 30. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by holding up your voter cards. Is there any opposed? Are there any opposed? The motion to indefinitely postpone Article 30 is passed on a unanimous vote. Article 31, may I have a motion, please? Mr. DeVasto?
I move to accept and adopt Article 31 with the wording of the motion to be as printed in the motion's booklet.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept and adopt Article 31 with the wording of the motion to be as printed in the motion's booklet. The Housing Authority recommends this article by a vote of five to zero, and the local housing partnership also recommends by a vote of five to zero. Debate on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion under Article 31, please signify by holding up your voter Is there any opposed? The motion carries, again, on a unanimous vote. Article 32, may I have a motion, please?
I move to accept and adopt Article 32 with the wording of the motion to be as printed in the motion's booklet, except that the word "Wellfleet" be inserted in place of the blanks in the last two paragraphs.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Article 32 be accepted and adopted as printed in the motion, with the wording of the motion to be as printed in the motion's booklet, except that the word "Wellfleet" be inserted in place of the blanks in the last two paragraphs. Debate on the motion? Ms. Carlson?
Yes, I was the dissenting voice on the Select Board. I mentioned two things. My great-great-grandmother was a full-blooded Cherokee Indian and appears in many of my family photographs. I am proud of my Indian heritage. I can't say it's a big part of my family, but I also studied a lot of history, and I am not in general in favor of the erasure of history as an answer for addressing its atrocities. I've looked at the seal. I think the image is fairly innocuous. In the write-up of this article, I don't notice anybody quoting anybody of Native American heritage. Maybe that was an omission, but I'm not sure what we really get out of changing paintings and images and running around knocking down statues. I think we have to change the social conditions of today that are problematic. So that's my two cents on this, and that's why I didn't vote for it. I think it's a shame to erase history. When our town hall burnt down, there was a lot of talk in certain circles that we should build something that was more appropriate to the times, you know? We would have gotten a cheesy building from the 70s, maybe. I think, I'm glad we have a reproduction from our past, and I think we should cherish our past. And sometimes our past is not great, but that doesn't mean we should erase it and run around and build ourselves a new past. I would be more inclined to vote for this article if it endorsed a few scholarships for disadvantaged Native Americans rather than put new artwork on the seal. And that's my two cents.
Thank you, Ms. Carlson, yes.
I'm Judith Cumbler. Can't hear you.
Yeah, we need to come to the microphone, please. Your name?
Can I put this forth? First of all, a lot of Native Americans...
I'm sorry, I'm blanking on your name.
I'm Judith Cumbler.
Thank you, Ms. Cumbler.
And I put this forward. A lot of Native Americans have asked that it be changed. I understand there isn't unanimity about that. I think it belongs in the historical museum. It's very similar issue to the Confederate flags in the South. It's offensive. It's offensive to many people, and I would vote that, and even Governor Baker said he would consider alternative flags. So I find it, the fact that there's a sword over a Native American person, not to be a comforting image. If it was about my group of people, I would find it scary. So even in the Independent this week, a Native American woman said it always bothered her. So I submit that we do, it's not binding, but I think it's important that we consider how people feel about it, so.
Thank you, Ms. Cumbler. Further debate? Are you ready for the question? The motion, Ms. Wilson?
I support Select Woman Carlson's not wanting to destroy history, particularly not wanting to hide our egregious behavior of the past. However, this resolution suggests that we change the image on the state flag and seal of Massachusetts. It doesn't necessarily say that we should hide the fact that we treated the people who were here before Westerners came very, very badly. And I would like it to be considered publicly and to have people of Native American backgrounds weighing in. That said, I can't agree with Select Woman Carlson about town hall. I could have been done differently, but that's another matter. Thank you.
Mr. Curley?
Yes. So I would just like to remind everybody that flags do change. Our, the flag for the United States of America has gone through quite a number of changes over the years. Started out with 13 stars in a circle, we're up to 50. You know, we don't have to keep the same symbology all throughout. And that this seal is, depicts a victory, you know, a victory in slaughtering of Native Americans, both by the pilgrim colonists and during the King Philip's War, I think is something that is not, I mean, symbols have power. We have to remember that, and we have to, we have to address this eventually. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Curley. Are you ready for the question?
Yes.
Okay, the motion before you was the motion made by Mr. DeVasto that the town accept and adopt Article 32 with the wording of the motion to be as printed in the motion's booklet, except that the words "Wellfleet" be inserted in place of the blanks in the last two paragraphs. All of those, all those in favor of the motion, please hold up your voter card. Okay, all those opposed? The motion carries by a majority vote. Articles 33 through 36 are standard articles, normally voted together as part of a consent agenda. May I have a motion, please? Mr. DeVasto?
So we are on 33 to 36?
33 through 36.
I used the wording, oh. I move to accept...
You'll find it in your motion booklet, I believe.
Okay, you want me to, I should read the whole motion then? Okay, give me one second. 33 through 36. Okay, I move to accept and adopt Articles 33 through 36 with the wording of the motion to be as printed in the motion's booklet. Article 33...
No, I'm sorry. Let me see if we can save you some time.
Okay. I was just going to read the...
No, just read that.
Okay, sorry. I move that Articles 33 through 36 inclusive be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
Is there a second?
Second.
He's a new selectman. We've got to sort of cut him some slack.
He's doing good. He's doing well.
He's doing very well.
He's doing very well. The motion made by Mr. DeVasto is that Articles 33 through 36 inclusive be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant. Any questions or debate? All those in favor of the motion, please, I'm sorry. Ms. Wilson?
Sorry, I'm not new to the board, so I have all these horrible questions. I apologize. Let's change it to her designee, so I'm proposing an amendment. That's minor. We know that Maria Broadbent is not he. And this has always bothered me, because I know that in the past, occasionally, town administrators, and Ms. Broadbent is my fifth town administrator that I've worked with, have been a little bit cavalier about what they go and get rid of. So I would like to amend this in two ways, to have it changed to her designee from his designee.
Can you, can you tell me which, which one that refers to?
I'm sorry, I'm talking about Article 33.
Okay.
Right? And I'm good with the rest of them. And then to also add, and to inform the Select Board of such disposition before it occurs.
You have that in writing, or not?
No.
Okay.
I don't. I apologize for that, but Harry Turkanian got away with it, so. And to...
Please don't refer to other people.
I'm sorry. Right, you're right.
So can you give me the wording again? You want to change?
Yes, I can. I'm going to read the whole thing. It's just two lines. Article 33, "to see if the town will vote to authorize the town administrator or her designee to dispose of the following articles of personal property by trade in or sale, or do or act anything thereon, and to inform the Select Board of such disposal before
Inform the Select Board of such disposal?
Yeah. That isn't...
Disposition.
Disposition?
Disposition, thank you.
Before it occurs?
Yes. And I could tell you about two instances of this that we make your hearing.
Before you do that...
Second.
I'm not going to.
You want to change the word "his" to "her," or do you want to change that to a gender-neutral word?
Make it gender-neutral. His or her, whatever.
Or the, or the designee.
Or the designee.
It's "the." Let's go with "the" designee, so we don't have to come back and do this again. Okay, the amendment offered by Ms. Wilson is to change the phrase under Article 33 so that it reads, "to see if the town will vote to authorize the town administrator or the designee to dispose of the following articles of personal property by trade in or sale, or do or act anything on, thereon, and to inform the Select Board of such disposition before it occurs." Is it necessary to debate this?
I'm just standing up.
You're just standing up? Okay. All those in favor of the amendment offered by Ms. Wilson, please raise your voter cards. Okay, any opposed? Okay, the motion, the amendment carries. Did the town clerk get a decent record of that?
I got it.
Okay, I just want to make sure. You know, there is an official record of the meeting, and we do want to try to get it right, so. Are you ready for the, are there any other questions on any of the Articles 33 through 36? If not, the motion before you is to adopt Articles 33 through 36 inclusive, accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant with the amendment offered, that would alter the language of Article 33, to add the phrase, to make the pronoun gender-neutral, and to add the phrase, "and to inform the Select Board of such disposition before it occurs." All those in favor of the motion, please signify by holding your voter cards up?
I just did.
All right, any opposed? The motion carries by unanimous voice vote, unanimous vote, no voices. Article 34, may I have a motion, please?
Yep, I move to accept and adopt Article 44 with the wording of the motion to be as printed in the motion's booklet.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I said 34, I did mean 37.
Okay, that makes more sense.
Yes.
Okay.
It's been a long day.
I move to accept and adopt Article 37. Is that right, Danny?
Yes, of course.
With the wording of the motion to be as printed in the motion's booklet.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Article 37 with the wording of the motion as printed in the motion's booklet. All those in favor of the motion, hold up your voter card. Any opposed? The motion carries on a unanimous vote. Article 38, may I have a motion, please?
I move to accept and adopt Article 38 with the wording of the motion to be as printed in the... printed in the motion's booklet.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept and adopt Article 38 with the wording of the motion to be as printed in the motion's booklet. Is there any other business to come before the meeting? I do have some business that needs to take place before I take care of mine. Any other business?
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. McGee, yes?
Under the minuscule chance that you're not going to say so, we'd like to, as the Finance Committee and for the whole town, recognize 13 years of service by Janet Lowenstein, who is leaving the Finance Committee as of today. And, thank you. And thank you on Janet's behalf.
Yes, you beat me to it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McGee. Any other business? Under, under the final article in the warrant, I do always have to make some appointments. There are certain appointments for which the moderator is responsible rather than the Select Board. Included in those are the appointments to the Social and Human Services Advisory Committee. This is a five-member committee, which was created by the annual town meeting in April of 2000 under Article 27. Mr. Frank Corbin is reappointed to a three-year term through the 2023 annual town meeting with thanks. And Ms. Sarah Blandford is reappointed to a three-year term through the 2023 town meeting, again with thanks. Also, at that April 24, 2000 annual town meeting, under Article 28, a bylaw committee of three members was created. I'm appointing Mr. Samuel Pickard to fill the remainder of the term left vacant by Roger Putnam's passing. This term runs through the 2021 ATM annual town meeting. And Ms. Liz Stansel is reappointed to a three-year term through the 2023 annual town meeting with thanks. One of the additional committees for which I'm responsible is the Regional Vocational Technical School Committee. This comprises two members. This is under our charter, Chapter Two, Section 2-2B. That gives me the responsibility for those appointments. Mr. Anthony Tulio is reappointed to a three-year term through the 2023 annual town meeting with thanks. In accordance with Section 7-1-1 and 7-1-3 of the town charter, I will now be asking you for your votes to approve my appointments to the Finance Committee. And as Fred, Mr. McGee indicated, Ms. Lowenstein has served on the Finance Committee since 2009. She asked not to take, to take a break and not be reappointed. So again, thank Ms. Lowenstein for all of her work on this committee and on behalf of the town. Thank you, Ms. Lowenstein. It's Lowenstein. I do get that wrong. I apologize. It's Ms. Lowenstein. I'm reappointing Mr. Steven Palovcik to a three-year term through the 2023 annual town meeting. All those in favor of the appointment of Mr. Palovcik, please indicate by saying aye, by holding your voter cards up, rather? Are there any opposed? Mr. Palovcik is appointed to another three-year term. I made an interim appointment of Ms. Sarah Robin as an alternate member of the Finance Committee. I am now reappointing her to a full three-year term as an alternate member of the Finance Committee. All those in favor of the appointment of Ms. Robin? Any opposed? Ms. Robin is appointed to a three-year term to the, as an alternate member of the Finance Committee through the 2023 town meeting. And I am appointing a new member, Ms. Jennifer Rhodes, to a three-year term through the 2023 town meeting. All those in favor of the appointment of Ms. Rhodes, please hold up your voter card. Any opposed? Thank you. And I have two openings on the Finance Committee. One is a regular member, and one is an alternate member. I'd be interested in hearing from anyone who is interested in serving. You can get in touch with me through town hall, or just find me somewhere around town. Is there any other business to come before the meeting? Not before I ask for a motion to dissolve. I'd just like to say, to thank you all for your patience. This is a historic town meeting. I'd again want to give credit, for those of you who might have, can't come late. I want to give credit to the town staff who put in a really tremendous amount of time. We put a task force together. We've been meeting since July to make this a success. Thank you very much to the young folks who served as mic wranglers for a job well done. And thank you for Audio Associates for doing such a great job with the sound. I think everybody was able to hear really well. We're going to be using the two exits on, take that back. Can we open that second exit there, Captain Capello? Yeah, thank you. So there's two exits, one on the far side of this home team dugout, one on the, on the near side of the dugout. I'd like not everybody to leave at once, or if you do, there are few enough people here, I think we can leave. But please try to maintain your spacing as you leave. And if you're able to, and you can carry your chair with you, just help us with the pickup a little bit afterward. You could leave the chairs over near the dugout. Appreciate that. And if I could have, you know, maybe a dozen or so people to help bring the rest of the chairs over and clear the field, that would be helpful as well. Thank you all for attending. I think it was as good an experience as we could make this, given the conditions. I would now entertain a motion to dissolve the meeting. Is there a second?
Yeah.
It's been moved and seconded to dissolve the annual town meeting. All those in favor of dissolving the meeting?
Yes!
Hold up your voter cards. Anyone opposed? The annual town meeting is hereby dissolved.